This conference will now be recorded.
We will all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Aye.
Okay, and just as another reminder, if you are joining via web, just make sure that your computer is on mute during the room. Please make sure your phones are on mute. If you're on the board, please make sure that your mics are unmute.
Tony.
Tony. And do we have Mr. Guy on?
He's there, yes.
Yes. So before we get started, I would just like to have a motion to allow special privilege for Mr. Guy to attend today's meeting.
Under exceptional circumstances.
Under, yes, under exceptional circumstances. I have a motion in a second. I'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. As we move through, before we get to public comments, do you want me to run through the whole of the final agenda? So, do we look for a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay. Just, it doesn't look like we have any additional items to add, so we're changing the format just slightly in an effort to streamline, be more efficient, and to kind of adhere to, you know, some standards. So you'll notice that some of the formatting in our agenda is slightly different, and I'll go ahead and address consent agenda while I'm here. So when we get to consent agenda, anything in that agenda, once we get there, I will call for any consent agenda item to be pulled. And if there's any discussion whatsoever on that, we will pull it. We will go ahead and approve any items left in the contention that involve, just away from us to streamline, which we typically do that, have been doing it for a lot of meeting minutes, but other items that would be considered under consent, that we can keep in there, we will approve involved, which means we'll have no further discussion on it. If there's anything to pull, we'll pull it, and then we can have further discussion. So can I just get a motion to approve the final agenda for today, which is August 4?
I'll make the motion to approve it with one question after a second.
I'll second a motion for discussion.
Yeah, discussion.
Yeah, I want to make sure that the resolution and everything that's associated with the bond deal will be held off till 4 o'clock, because a lot of people are thinking that that's when that's going to be discussed.
If I may, Chairman, the idea was, since the board's going to be asked to adopt an amended and restated engineers report, and an amended and restated assessment methodology based upon a lot of the comments and questions that the staff, Chelsea, and Laura had been fielding from the public after they received the notices, and there are a lot of good questions. And part of that was the issue with regards to whether or not the tributary benefits allocated to Pelican Preserve for the administration building for the weir. And so that's the order in business in the agenda was set up so that the first consideration would be to adopt the amended and restated engineers report, and amended and restated assessment report. And then that basically changes the calculus as far as allocation of benefits. So it's different than what was happening before. The second resolution, which is 2022-13, sets a new public hearing date for October 6, and then also cancels the hearing for today. It repeals the prior resolution 2022-13, so that the hearing will not be held today. And then the last resolution is available only in the event that the board does not feel comfortable with adopting the amended and restated engineers report, and amended and restated assessment methodology report, and that resolution 2022-18, which is Roman numeral 6A. That's just a standalone resolution cancelling the public hearing for today. The idea was to, so the public would not have to hear, talk about something that the board will, you know, that's different than what they had received the notice on.
Well, I know a lot of people in the community are coming, or were planning on coming at 4 o'clock totally on the basis that the discussion of the amended engineers report would be at that time, that it wouldn't be earlier.
Well, but even at that point, you would still have to submit if they were, if they were here solely to, I'm trying to think of a public comment.
See, that's the problem. They can't make a comment because they don't know what to comment on. That's the issue.
Okay.
How do they make a comment on something they haven't seen?
Yeah, the original public hearing was for the purpose of basically equalizing the assessments and hearing any objections and comments to the assessments that are outlined in the assessment methodology, but that's changing. The staff is recommending it be changed to the amended and restated assessment methodology. So the document that was noticed in the mailing that they received for today is not something the board's going to finalize today. It's, this begins the process.
No longer part.
This, in essence, renewed, begins to process anew as far as the scope of the project, the allocation of benefits, and the assessments that are recommended.
So, and if I were to state that we're making amendment, or adopting resolutions, which will, in effect, cancel the 4 o'clock, and which will give residents and the public ample time to review additional documentations or changes at the point of when,
The October 6th.
October 6th. So they will have time to comment, review,
Absolutely, and in the same, in the same type of notice that went out the first time, the mail letter notice, the notice in the newspaper for October 6th hearing will also have to be all be published. We have to go through that whole exercise again.
We got a chicken or egg here, Dale. If we don't approve the amended engineers report, makes it very difficult for us to present costs on a report that hasn't been approved yet.
That's correct.
So that means we are going to be talking about the amended engineers report, and endorsing it to some nature to be able to have Russ legitimately tell people what the costs are associated with it.
Let me try to help.
I just want to make sure the public, our transparency on this issue, I'm telling you, ain't what we call great in the public. It's not great at all. Anything we can do to let the public have their opportunity to ask any questions about the amended report, I think we should bend over backwards to allow it to happen.
They'll be able to make comments on non-agenda items, so even if we don't look at it as an agenda item, I don't think the, we're going to stop them from making any comments. I mean, I'll be open to listen to any comments, regardless if it's an agenda item or not. They have three minutes.
If we want to do that and have it as a recall, I'm just trying to save time of having, I don't know how many people are going to come in at 4 o'clock, but I hate to do this twice.
Chelsea, I think you had a comment or suggestion, or?
Yep. So, the public hearing that is scheduled for 4 o'clock today is essentially step two, okay, of this bond validation process. If you recall, this board reviewed and approved the master engineer's report and the assessment methodology at a previous meeting. So what we're asking of the staff, or the board today, is cancel step two. We're going back to step one. Step one is reviewing the master engineer's report and assessment methodology today, amended to include Pelican Preserve.
I agree.
Scheduling a public hearing for October 6th. That would be step two. So they would have between now and October 6th to reach out to staff, reach out to the board, send in their comments. We're going to mail notices like we did this, for this public hearing that was scheduled for today at 4:00. We're going to do all of that again, so we're back, we're going back to step one. But we need the board's approval to go back to step one by cancelling today's public hearing at 4:00.
I don't have any problem with any of that. I'm just saying, let's have the discussion of the report, amended report, starting at 4 o'clock. That's all I'm saying.
So you're requesting to alter the agenda?
Yeah.
Order.
That's why, that's why I motioned to approve it with.
I understand that, but I think at the end of the day, I think what's important, if anybody is listening now, is that there will not be a hearing on the original engineers report, there will not be a hearing on the assessment methodology as noticed in the newspaper, and was noticed and indicated in the letters that we received because we have this amended document.
Well, if the board doesn't accept the amended document, it reverts back to the one that we passed, correct? And then we can move forward.
The staff's not, the staff is not recommending that the original engineers report be issued.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not looking at any of that. I'm thinking that what we're proposing to do and what we're going to end up doing is one and the same. I just want to be transparent such that the audience has the opportunity to ask questions about a document they haven't seen.
Are there any issues with moving the resolution A through C?
To 4 o'clock?
To 4 o'clock.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking.
No problem.
Any issues? Okay, alright. So you'll just amend?
Yeah. I'll amend, well, no, I leave the motion the way I had it, and then I have the discussion to now amend it that we move the resolution discussion to 4 o'clock.
And then I'll say that.
Alright, I will call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, perfect, alright. Okay, so now we will go into consent agenda. Any items to pull in agenda A through D?
Hold on, back up. Do public comment before you do consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Trying to get used to this new format. So before we go there, we'll go into public comment. I think we have a couple.
Yes.
There are five. First is David Ruth. He has questions about the bond validation request and public hearings. Just a reminder that you get five minutes. There's a.
Can you please come to the mic? If you were, if you're requesting, just put it on record, please.
Hello, I'm David Ruth. I'd like to be, let's move to last on the questions and answers today. I've got a, I've got a number of questions from papers that have been sent to me by.
You still get five minutes if you're first to have.
So you want to, you want to come, you want to be the last speaker in the public comments?
Be the last speaker, yes.
Okay, alright, then have a seat.
And I may, I may have all my answers by the time we're done.
Alright, great. Have a seat, and we'll just keep moving forward. Thank you.
Kathy Flaherty? She didn't make it.
See Kathy, keep moving.
Alright. Robert Spencer, he has a CIP, capital improvement plan. I said, just as a reminder, there's five minutes, and there's a timer up here. It'll start green when it starts flashing yellow. That means you've got about a minute left.
Well, first of all, thank you for taking this project on with existing staff. It's a mighty big project, and a complicated project, but one I have to admit, I don't understand based on my limited looking at the, and the notification time that I've had to look at the whole process. As I understand it by reading your methodology, an item to be bonded and preceded on by this process you're doing has to have two main functions under law. One, it has to have a specific and indirect and direct benefit, and number two, it has to be a fair assessment. First of all, the scope of the project, as I look at your attached maps, for example, taking streets, you show street improvements colored for Preserve, Pelican, and for Stony Brook, but there's no improvement highlights. There's three small highlights on the roads in existing Gateway Green. I've had an ongoing problem with traffic in, on Gateway Green. It's a county road. The sheriff doesn't put people there all the time that do something, not just show something. And, and it's intolerable to try to have a conversation on my leni, because we got hot routers, speeding, wrecks, all kinds of things going on. And that's a county problem, but the authority and prestige of Gateway Green should be used to implement more pressure to get speed bumps. I know there's issues with that, but we've got to slow these people down for the good of them, as well as for the civility and respect that they're not giving to us that live in the community. We gave that, community gave that road to the county. We need to make sure the county does what they need to do. So the confusion I have on, on the roads and the lack of security in the issue is something I think that could be in this SIP. Secondly, the SIP clearly says that, on page two, that, let me get it here. The SIP will benefit the properties located on Gateway, on the Gateway portion of the district, and not the Pelican Preserve area of the district, and yet the original SIP includes improvements to that area. The equity in, in determining the value also is based on a, as I read it, a 2008 study by Utah, University of Utah. So I, I think the openness that you talked about, sir, is very important as we be informed a little more, in a little more detail, and perhaps with the authenticity and the integrity of the people you cite as experts. Even the engineering study for the SIP, you know, I don't know what the background of that, those firms are. So I think that your point about transparency and a little more clarity on the necessity for water improvements in particular are important. Example, we put 6 million into Lake Bank restoration. How does the 30 million proposed over 10 years for the rest of the project blend with that? What about the financing of that project and this project? And how do they compare? And is that part of the 30 million that you're going to take the cost of the 6 million and include it? So there's a lot of issues like that, that are a little bit complex for somebody like myself, that I'm not staying up on, on this. I trust you. I'm going by faith. But, you know, a former president, much maligned in some cases, said that, trust everybody. But he also said, but always cut the carts. So I'm asking you to help us cut the carts. How can we determine what you're doing is legitimate, it's to our benefit, and it's fairly assessed? One more caveat. You guys made a decision, somebody made a decision to cut down 50 trees. You didn't bother to tell anybody you wanted to do that. You didn't get input from it. And a lot of us think that the studies are important. It's not just the mechanics of maintaining that sidewalk. It's the, what it looks like. And Gateway, I'll compare it to a Michigan tunnel of trees up by Sleeping Bear. Any of you been to Sleeping Bear dunes?
And this is your, if you could please wrap it up, sir?
They've got a street that's called the Tunnel of Trees. Gateway Boulevard represents that, and it's a, it's a really good area. So we'd like to see it maintained that way, too. So get more input from the people some way. I don't know if you could do that.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Next.
Vince LaFredo has a question. Where are the deposits located with Gateway Water District? Hook up was $200.
I'm a resident of Stony Brook, and I've been here a little over eight years. Initially, when, when we hooked up utilities cable, FPL, if you had to put a deposit down, you put it. And one that's been gnawing at me for a number of years is, we put a deposit down with the Gateway Water District, $200. It's been sitting there for eight years for me. I've looked at the total amount of homes that are in Stony Brook, and it's a significant amount of money that's just sitting somewhere. I'd like to know where to locate it, and the financials for the Gateway District. If it's in the general fund, or if it's separate, does it, does it accumulate interest? And reading Lake County statutes, reading Florida statutes, most utilities return the deposits within a 23-month period, if your credit is okay with. I figure eight years is enough time to request a deposit back. I can't speak for other residents. I'm only speaking for myself, and I'd just like to know what rules we're going by to keep that in effect as it is right here. And that was pretty much what my question is. It's departure from all of the things that are going on. I didn't want to throw a curveball. However, this is what I want to do, and I'm hoping I can get a direct answer and find out if I can get my deposit back, since it's never accumulated interest, and it's $200 to sit in. And that's pretty much.
I thought we had a decision made on this years ago, that there was a time deal that we were going to allow that back. And I even recall that if an owner came in and requested it, and they met all the requirements, we released that.
I have to go back and check. I don't remember.
Yeah.
I remember that, because that was an issue.
We, we will follow up with the gentleman.
It's a protection deal for, for us in the beginning, but eight years is absurd.
That's what I mean.
And I don't know how much money we've got in that account. That's a good question. How much money do we have in that account?
We'll follow up with the gentleman.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Go check and see if I've got any in there.
We already spent yours. Next speaker, please.
Rod Senior, it just says non-agenda. I don't know what the topic is. Reminder, five minutes.
Five minutes, thank you. Good afternoon, board and fellow residents. This is to do with the $58 million bond proposal. I acknowledge the board bears responsibility for containing the district's capital assets. Chelsea, I realize you're new on the scene. You're here to guide the board in this mission, and I'm asking you to apply the brakes on the $58 million bond process and ensure that you have the consensus of the community behind you. There's not been sufficient community consultation in this process. I think there is a PR problem. $58 million borrowing capacity will undoubtedly lead to a real borrowing, potentially leading to an annual assessment of $1,016 for me for 20 years. My property taxes today are $4,400 bucks. That's going to go up 23% to $5,400 bucks. That's solely due to the CDD component. For the district to even consider this without full consultation is unacceptable. A board's responsibility is to enhance property values, and such an increase will actually damage property values. I read the 24-page Tetra Tech engineers report that is legally required to support the $58 million bond validation. Here are my concerns. Biggest component is $38 million for waterways. Of that, 30 million is for Lake Bank restoration. This started out when I was on the board in 2015 at a $4 million project. Forty-nine of Gateway's 69 ponds were earmarked for pond bank restoration with a total perimeter footage of 93,000 linear foot. That 4 million has now ballooned to 30 million. Gateway lies between Lehigh and Fiddlesticks, and not just geographically, but demographically. Bronze, silver, gold. Not everything here needs to be gold-plated. It just needs to work. Silver is okay. I urge you to look at what other communities are doing on Lake Bank restoration to satisfy South Florida water management requirements. Ed and I visited Heritage Palms. They're doing a great job with Geotube. There is a new product, Chelsea, called Reg Sox, S-O-X, which is a fraction of the cost of our Maxon stone surface, which I'm assuming has now ballooned up to $200 a linear foot. The other elephant in the room is $10 million for the park at Gateway Commons. This only last year was 5.5 million as a result of Holmont's study. This park includes, according to Tetra Tech, a bench, a sports court, family splash pool, community center, amphitheater, and pavilions. No mention of any security or operating costs. The survey that was done of the community last year on this has a caption, "The board desires full transparency and maximum public input." Well, the survey results were damning. 89% of Gateway residents don't want any new assessments for such a park, and every component of that park was voted 60% or more, no. So why is this item even thrown in the hopper as part of the proposed $58 million? Doug, I believe this is your agenda, and I think the rest of the board needs to focus on this and remove it from the, remove it from this entire proposal, unless you know that you've got the community behind you. And I know that the two people on the board from Pelican aren't even paying for it. Financing capital projects via a bond process is ridiculously expensive. The bond underwriting fee alone is 1.5%, which is 870 grand on 58 million. Then there's all the other professional entities, including bond counsel on your own, and engineers feeding our trough. A year ago, we talked about removing big items out of the operating budget, which brought it down from 103% increase down to 10%. Great. But you did agree to do a capital reserve study at that time. I think you should refocus on a capital reserve study. Ed, you and I have just been through it on the HUA. It works. Let's put all these plans into a transparent process with town hall meetings, stage the 20, 20 years of capital items with full consultation, and collect an annual contribution. We don't need a bond. We don't need this expensive process. If you need short-term funds, go and get a five-year loan from the bank. $2.7 million for a new office building, I support it. It needs needed. Get it from the bank. We don't need this bond. Thank you.
And just for the record, no single board member has any authority to add to the capital improvement project or anything on the bond. Who else do we have?
David, did you want to speak, or were your questions answered? We have David Ruth, questions about bond validation requests and public hearings.
Yeah, I basically, everything he just said, half of the things that I wanted to say, he said. So I think everybody heard that. I received information on July 18th for a notice of public hearing, which you're postponing today. And I've received several things, which has moved this around, and it kind of becomes kind of confusing to the layperson, and it becomes kind of frustrating to people who really actually want to come and say something. They don't really feel like we've been part of the process. So in this, there's like four pages. July 18th was the, what I'm referring to. And, you know, there's a question about public safety services increased by $100,000, just as an example, for additional patrol services provided by sheriff's office. You know, most of us don't even know what the original budget is for that. Somewhere I read $2 million. And I don't know where I got that, and I wish I could bring it. But anyway, I'd like to know some of these numbers. And when I, when I look at all the things you're trying to do, you know, with the monies that you're asking for, you know, it seems like somebody, somebody said that this was a wish list of things that you guys have come up with, and, you know, with the park and all the things. The wish list was on the, I think, the Gateway Community Newspaper, and it was one of your wives that said it. But if it's, if these are wish lists, then what, what are the things that we're wishing for? We need a list of all of the things that you're basically putting into going after 70-some million dollars, and then you've rounded it off to 80 million, but I think 50-some million was what the original number was. So I'm totally confused with that. Okay? So, you know, what the public safety, there's a lot of questions about like numbers that I need information for, to know what I'm going to do in this process. And, and one of the questions is, or one of the other papers said that I have the right to have documents associated with capital improvement plans and associated financing. This document does not purport to summarize in their entirety any of the documents referenced herein. Accordingly, residents should refer to the complete versions of such documents which are filed in the, here in the district. Okay? So I'd like to set up an appointment to see what these documents are. Okay? And if some, one of you would do that with me, I'd appreciate that. You know, again, numbers like $749 for the entire year will not exceed $749. And then you go on basically, you know, and give an assessment, you know, for Pelican Preserve, and then areas one and two, that some of the stuff doesn't really make sense to me. So what the total proposed assessments are, what those things are, which I assume will come in budgets that you're going to talk about, and we're going to be able to see, you know, I think we need a little more clarity on that. That's, that's, I think, one of his concerns. The park, the park was done last year. It was voted no, and 80-some percent of the, of the survey said, we don't want the park. So don't keep bringing it back up and putting it back in, things that you think we're not going to look. We are going to look. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Doug, we'll reach out to that gentleman and set up a meeting.
If you need to speak, you just need to fill out a form, so we can get you up. Do we have, just, if you would just give Laura your, okay, you can just step up to the podium, give Laura your name, and she'll just, we just have to formally document.
We have to speak at the podium.
I just, if you wouldn't mind, state your name and your.
Barney Draper. I came up with a little cancer problem. I got a chemical in me, and I want you to turn the air conditioner down, but I gotta do, okay? But I have a lot of things I wanted to say, but I guess I have to do it one at a time, alright? And I appreciate.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
He said he's calling.
Yeah.
Okay, that was other person's not here, so we're good. Nobody online. Barney Draper.
What do you mean? No, he said he is not feeling well. So just for the record, Mr. Draper said he, he would like to speak, but he's not feeling well and would like to leave. We will give him every, every opportunity to supply his feedback, his, his, you know, comments, whatever. He just, he said he's not feeling well, so he can't stay for today. Just want to make sure that's clear. We're not, not allowing him to speak, so I just want to be clear. And so he said, he said, I'm not feeling well. I cannot stay. I have to leave. That's exactly what he said. I mean, I'm sorry, sir, but I said if, I said if he would just give his name to Laura, she would fill out the paperwork for him. So that's what he said. I'm standing, and I understand where he's coming from. I went through chemotherapy, I went through cancer. I know how he feels. If he needs to leave, I completely understand that. Okay, who's next?
I don't have anyone else.
Nobody online.
Uh, nobody. Nobody online has to speak, no. There's, there's one question, but it's for me, so I'll take care of it.
Okay. All right, so we will move on to so we're pushing the resolution items.
Consent agendas next.
Yeah, we will go through consent agenda, any items to pull in consent agenda 7A through D.
I have nothing.
Nothing.
Now the motion to approve consent agenda, consent agenda items 7A through D. Second, move in a second. I will call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Management updates. Let's start with you, if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, yes, briefly, item number one. This is just more of an update, working with the staff and particularly with Pelican Preserves, what we're working on for the first resolution and outline of committee scope, duties, responsibilities, as well as meeting protocols for both the committee and any subcommittees or work groups that may arise by virtue of that. And so we're working through that. We hope to bring that to the P-PAC or the board within the next, next board meetings. It can be kind of busy, maybe a little bit after that. But we're making some good progress. And that's just the update on those. We're going to do one person credit, create a template. It can be, half of it can be applied to any committee, then do a unique features that then get filled in for the specific committees. Next is task priorities list. This is in a memo form. If the board has any questions about any of the items on there with regards to any updates with regards to these matters.
Right, thanks.
They may have any questions about.
Any questions for Tony, his priority task list?
Charles, he's been very cooperative and helpful. We had a good call, Chelsea initiated, Chelsea, Laura, myself, Charles, Russell, Smith. And that's the idea, if you, if you note that the item was number one and two was, the idea was for WC Allen R to get a package to the district by August 11th to make the August 18th board meeting for all these conveniences. And, and includes Area 9. Which, that, it sort of dropped off the radar for all these years, but that's, that's on track. And then also, as a further update, I received a packet yesterday from Steve Adams, I've not yet looked at it yet. That involves the Palazzo Convenance to wrap that up. And also working with Steve and I getting the conveyance from the Pelican Reserve Community Association of that strip of land on the north end of Pelican Reserve that goes east-west. And then will connect with the Allen R parcel to get out the emergency road. So those are all moving along. Yeah, the idea is to try to get all that before the board, August 18th, as far as the deeds. The, as I understand it, the development orders are issued from Lee County. And the permit from the city of Fort Myers has been issued. But we've not yet let anything out for bid until we have ownership.
The lands, the issues.
Yes, so August 18th is the, we're all shooting for.
No additional questions for Tony? District engineer.
Yes, okay. Hi, I'm Alfred or Fred Middle with Tetra Tech. We're the author of my firm and me personally as the engineer of record of the amended and restated Master Engineers Report. I'm just going to give you a quick overview of what has changed in the amended report. The total value of the bond validation for the 10-year CIP is unchanged. What did change was adding the Pelican Preserve area as part of the assessment. Now there's two assessment areas, the Gateway Assessment Area and the Pelican Preserve Assessment Area. And only some of the projects in the 10-year CIP were identified to also benefit Pelican Preserve. And they're in two overall categories. That would be administrative and in waterway management. In the administrative category, those projects that also benefit Pelican Preserve Assessment Area are the boardroom renovations. The professional fees, engineering, and legal that were required to, to issue the bond validation, get the bond validated. Some accounting software updates for the district and a new main district building, administration building. So those are the, those are the, I believe, four projects in the admin area. And there's one project in the waterway management category that also benefits Pelican Preserve. And that would be the weers within the waterway management system that is common to both assessment areas. And so that, that's what changed. And then subsequent to that would be the recalculation of the, the assessment values.
So for the audience, just to make sure that everybody understands, the scope of the project has not changed whatsoever.
No.
The 58 million stills 58 million. Every one of the components are still the components. The only difference is instead of the Area 1 Gateway, 100% paying for everything, we have now brought in what would be shared costs and splitting it up between Gateway and Pelican.
That's correct.
And for clarification, if I may, Mr. Chairman and the board, that's something that is addressed in the assessment methodology, the proposed amended and restated assessment methodology. And what I would suggest is, at the board's hearing this now, the board also talked about at 4 o'clock, basically, we're going to have another presentation of all of this because when we consider those resolutions. But the engineers' report addressed the location of these improvements. The dollars haven't changed. But again, then Russ Wired did his assessment methodology as to the allocation of benefits.
Am I on now?
Yeah, there you go.
Sorry. As far as the components that Fred just mentioned, the only thing that, that I personally agree with is the administration building. We certainly will benefit from that. I completely disagree with accounting software updates over here because we're already paying an administration fee. So why would we put this into a bond? Because there's no direct benefit to Pelican by that. The waterway management is being proposed in terms of, because there's some physical weers within Pelican that we should be paying for that. I completely disagree. Waterway management, the flowway is totally owned, operated, and maintained by the district. Pelican can't do anything. We can't even restrict people from putting flowers in there. We were told very handily a couple of months ago, that's district property. And the district will answer and allow residents to have the torals, even though we had prohibited it. So you can't have it both ways. We can't have no input, but oh, when it's time to pay, we'd like you guys to pay. The only thing that, that makes sense to us, and because this is all pretty late-breaking, the last P-PAC meeting, we really didn't have time to digest it. But there was a proposal offered that if Pelican paid for their portion out of reserves, that we'd be excluded from the bond. And I believe that should be revisited by P-PAC in the next meeting because that will save a considerable amount of money. If we are not part of the bond package, then we shouldn't be paying for the studies and the financing and that couple hundred thousand dollars. The Weir 38 project could very easily be a standalone cause for Pelican, and they would accept that. But to, because that happens to be part of the, the greater gateway, it just doesn't make sense. The other part of the whole waterway management is if we're going to have people paying because they're using it. And I probably wouldn't disagree with that, okay? But if we're going to do it, we do everybody. We've got a bunch of communities that contribute to that. We've got Benito's Lakes. We've got Colonial Country Club. We've got Arborwood. All of these are component water sources for the flowway. So I'm not at all happy with where they came to this. And nor were we a part of it. It was just given to us when it was done. And the whole bond was changed. So that, I'm telling you where I'm coming from.
Bob, I want to make sure we get one thing clarified on that. Arborwood Phase 3 does pay. They're in the district.
Are they in this bond then?
Yeah, yeah, they're part of 01. Arborwood Phase 3 is an 01 Gateway.
No, 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 we're 01. I mean, I'm not talking about the, we're talking about this bond. If Arborwood's paying for this bond, I'm with you.
Gateway District 001 is the gateway side. You're 002, I believe.
Yeah.
The 001 includes 136, 137, whatever the number was, EAUs that are in Arborwood. Their water comes into the flowway and they're paying.
Through us, yeah. And Benita?
Yeah, they're paying.
Benita Lakes?
Benita Lakes, those are, that goes back to that issue that we've talked about 100 billion times.
Botanical Lakes.
Botanical Lakes. Well, I don't think Botanical Lakes is in our system whatsoever. But the area to the south of, what is that, Bridgetown? That's the one that's dumping 40, up to 40 CFS into Lake 38. And you saw how far we got on that deal. They basically told us stick where the sun.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we're either going to do it fair and equitable to everybody.
Well, I think what we need to do, and that's a totally separate deal that we have to go after. But the bottom line is, is that that flowway is common to carrying the water from A to B for everybody in this community.
Correct.
And so everybody should be participating. And so consequently, on the two weers that benefit both sides, I think Fred and Russ.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that, Ed. I'm agreeing. But what I'm saying is, you get everybody one time. Let's not pick and choose and take one.
It, it could be years before we get everybody.
Whatever, you're going to do it, do it right.
But it, well, it's just going to stall the, the whole thing out.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I think, I think I understand what Mr. Gephardt is saying. The properties are Colonial Country Club in Arborwood, not the Arborwood Phase 3 that's within the boundaries of the district. Botanical Lakes, they're all outside the boundaries of the district. The district has no authority to impose assessments on properties outside.
Can we dam up and not let them use airflow way?
No, the flowway is the, the South Florida Water Management District permit provides for the discharge of those properties into the flowway. There was a permit, I can show you the whole big binder that, I know, research years ago, that South Florida approved the expansion of that flowway. Part of it's platted for Colonial. And Colonial paid for the expansion of that flowway. And so they maintain, my understanding is Colonial pays for the maintenance of that flowway under the South Florida permit between Tree Line and I-75. And that's my recollection. And many years ago.
Well, I'd like to see that. I've never seen a nickel coming out of them.
No, they, they're supposed to take care of that section.
But, but they don't, Tony. That's why it was all damned up when Irma came.
Then that's something we need to notify South Florida Water Management District because we, it just, this district has no authority to impose levy assessments on property in Colonial Country Club. It's outside the boundaries of the district.
I totally agree. That, that was the issue on the east side of I-75, where they were not maintaining that. And we ended up having to do it. And we should have gone to Colonial and gone to South Florida Water Management District.
But we didn't.
They're not, they're not doing their end.
Okay, so now here we are in 2022, and we're changing the, the rules midstream. From day one to now, it's all been born as part of the Gateway Flowway System. And now you're, now we're changing the rules and saying, oh, by the way, now we want Pelican to pay.
No, it's always been that way.
We haven't paid a nickel, Ed.
Well, that's, that's the problem.
We shouldn't be because we don't own it. No, we don't.
You should have been paying.
We don't own it or maintain it.
You are, you're a part of this district. You're a part of this district.
Well, I was a part of it last year and we didn't.
And it should have. But I don't, I don't want to go down that road of what Pelican should be paying, what they shouldn't be paying, because that's going to go and open a can of worms that nobody going to want to talk about.
So because we don't open that can, we don't weigh this on the merits?
I'm just saying that if we can take and run this through based upon what Fred and Russ has presented in the way of what I think is a fair and equitable solution.
Well, I know you do. I never doubted you thought it was fair and equitable.
It's, I think it's a fair, we're looking at Gateway residents picking up the tab for about 1,016. If we spent the whole 58 million, then you guys picking up 4295. That, to me, looks as damn good, as fair and equitable as you're going to get.
Well, we disagree with that, okay?
Okay. But just as an aside, on that whole Colonial, I'll sit down and I'll show you, without going way back, Colonial started the mudslinging contest. They took a shot at the district years ago. And I did all the research and said, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, Colonial, you need to be maintaining this. And then we were going to have an agreement, never went anywhere. But I have no, just no problem with Russ directing that, bringing it back to the board to get a recommendation whether to go to South Florida. I, I think that's appropriate, quite frankly. And I will, and it's all printed out, so.
Not electronic.
It's a ball.
Is there anything additional for Fred or for engineering? Outside of the Master Engineer Report? No? Okay.
Well, I have one question, is the assumption that if Pelican paid upfront, we could avoid those other fees and we'd be out of this? Is that still a valid assumption?
That'd be a board decision, right? We would have to decide that, that's the route that we will take.
Well, I'm asking from their recommendation, because I heard it from.
And Russ, if you want to speak, please step up.
On that, and Chelsea, I think is Rhonda on the phone? At the point, I think at the point in time where we have the 4 o'clock items, Rhonda, as part of the finance team, can address the funding sources and how those are addressed, either inside or outside the bond.
And that's, and also the ability to pull items out of that CIP. I mean, could we, can you do that? Can you pull items or subsidize funding? I mean, I would imagine you could do that.
I think, I thought what Bob was saying is, is instead of assessing the owners in Pelican Preserve.
Yeah, they want to buy.
They just want to pay in upfront, and then there is no debt associated.
Correct.
Okay.
And then they'll save the money on the studies because they won't be a part of it because they're paying upfront, so they, they don't.
We don't need the financing.
Nobody needs, we'll save it too.
Yeah, that much of it.
Yeah.
And that, and that is what we hope to present to P-PAC next month. And I think that'll be a cost-effective thing for that community.
In, in other words, you're bringing cash to the table.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rather than the 20-year encumbrance, yes.
Understood, yeah. So I've got engineering. So we go into administrative agenda items. This is going to be administrative agenda item A, approval of land purchase.
I thought we did this last.
So did I.
Well.
In fact, I, I'm positive we did this last meeting.
You did it, and I second it, because I said we're going to call the bluff.
Why are we doing this again?
Well, I think this is, well, this is final approval on whether or not we're going.
It's a, it's final from the standpoint of what we need to do at the next board meeting, if the board decides to go ahead. Because since that time, and Chelsea wants to take the lead on that, the district has engaged, I think Tetra Tech to do a concept plan. We have the title work, the survey work, a zoning verification letter. And if the board ultimately decides to go ahead at the August 18th meeting, there'll be a resolution authorizing, going through the transaction, authorizing the chairman to sign all the necessary documents and the vice chair in the chair's absence. But just, we felt it was appropriate to let the board know that there are some site matters that would regulate how the buildings get constructed at the present time, absent some further vacations of ease. But Chelsea, I don't know if you want to.
That's fine, that's good.
Mr. Chairman?
My, my deal would be to make the motion to approve it. But subject to, I certainly don't want to split the building in half. Let's vacate the easement.
But the question is, I don't know if the seller would wait. The seller has said, we filed our survey objections and title objections. And some of those were the utilities that runs parallel to the lot line, the common lot line. So it ends up being 12 feet in width, and those are the surveys that were handed out to you.
And.
The seller said, we're not going to cure those. In other words, so that we, the board need to make a decision whether or not, you know, we need to make a decision whether to proceed and recognize. Whether or not you need to make a decision whether to proceed and recognize that if the board goes as and buys it. There there's a twelve foot utilities that runs down the middle.
Yeah, and if as long as that you we find out that utility easement has no utilities in it. My deal is vacate it. It's done all the time.
Once again, the vacation is a process to go through Lee County. It would take a number of months to do that. But the seller wants to not wait that, as I understand it, will not wait until that vacation process is concluded.
Okay, I need. Let me. Mr. Guy, I think you had.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Why don't we get our already busy. Releasing the deed restrictions on the Gateway Commons property. Seems like it's we've got it's. Has plenty of space for a new administration building and if even if it doesn't go there. It might be used for something else. But this deed restriction business. Needs to go away.
So Mr. Guy is part of the WCI Lennar package that is projected to come on the eighteenth of this month. They have agreed to work with the district and releasing those deed restrictions. So that is part of the package deal that is forthcoming.
I mean, Mike.
Now, what does that have? What does that say as far as the location of a new administration building?
How does that get around the issue? This is a park.
Wait a minute. Wait, wait, wait.
Who talking? Park. If it's not a park entity and asset, you you're gonna have a problem with the county. And there's you talk about I'll take on the deed or the vacation any day of the week before I want to take on that park. Change. Holy God, for you. You don't even want to go down that road.
You mean from the zone, from the document and the master plan?
Yeah, to allow a other use for that park.
Other than parks and recreation.
It's not. Oh, man, don't even go down that road. Well, not worth it.
I mean, my my position is we've been sitting on that land for a long time. If there was a way for us to. Get some usage out of it. And I wish Rod Senior was still here, but. You know, the whole reason why some of that some of that funding is in the CIP is because how it originally came up, I remember correctly, is we saw an opportunity to potentially put an administrative building there. While we're doing so, could also allow us an opportunity to build that park out and with whatever to enhance the community. My issue is I would just I I'm having a hard time. Looking at spending eight hundred thousand dollars for two plots of land when we have preexisting land available. And we can reinvest that eight hundred either into the build, which would again save our residents money. And I understand there's a risk because there was the zoning issue, but now we're seeing there's also some challenges on this property. Looks like the timeline might be pretty close to when we could cut. Be able to break ground on on either properties. I I know we need the land and we need to build a building. It's but we do have a temporary solution in place with the lease building that we have, so. I mean, it's a it's definitely a board decision and and I have been in favor of looking at alternatives, but I keep going back to why are we not building on land that we already own?
Has anybody gone to the county to find out what the hurdles and steps and jumps we have to go through?
That is.
Get that approved.
That is the link on this document. It is a nine month zoning process that would have to be done. That is the process that we would have to follow.
And subject to disapproval.
Yes, sir.
So it's got risk.
Well, it sounds like.
Done it before on other communities.
I'm not saying that. I'm not saying it's a slam dunk, but also we're seeing we're seeing issues.
For the site on this. This is the last land that we.
Well, but we is it a slam dunk that we could get this utility easement?
I never guarantee results with any.
We've got challenges on both properties and and I want to do what's best for the district.
Typically, what happens with request to vacate utilities means. You know, you have to get letters of no objection from the various utility providers. In this case, it could be Comcast, Xfinity.
Tony, please speak into your microphone.
I'm sorry. You have to go to the utility companies and get letters of no objection. Follow the, you know, and and. To the extent that we could say to those guys, hey, you really don't need it because we're going to develop this as a whole. That makes those chances are pretty decent.
I think we're. What's our drop dead date on this property?
Eight twenty two twenty two.
August twenty second, four days after the next meeting.
The point.
So we have to make a decision by the next meeting in order to proceed or pull back.
The point in getting this in front of you again is to show you that there is a process regardless of which selection is is which way the board wants to go. We needed confirmation from the board before Tony starts to spend time and draft a resolution. And we proceed with the final working with the seller on on closing documents and everything.
Okay, I I you've answered my question partially of it's gonna take nine months to do it. Did they give you odds on it being accomplished and being affirmative?
They they they're not gonna guess. They're gonna wait until the application comes in front of them. That's.
Is there any way that we can see if there's any precedent? Do you know, Tony, if there's any precedent for rezoning in in the manner? We're not eliminating the park area.
We can do that homework and bring it back.
Yeah, we could.
I would like to know if there.
And if you recall, one of the issues was the Girl Scout building. Was whether that was allowable use for office park at the time. I don't know if it required a rezone. I think it may have been administrative zoning variance or some other matter, but that took a few months. For that to to go through the process.
Well, I I wouldn't. I wouldn't have a problem because we get a meeting on the eighteenth. I wouldn't have a problem and we have a twenty second drop dead date.
Yeah.
So that buys us four extra days. I wouldn't have a problem, but God. Kick in the can down the road, just what I love to do. Do more research. It would not bother me at all to call the county. And talk to the person who this is gonna come before and say, hey, there is a lot of money right on this unnecessarily. Tell us if this can be done. If they sit there and him haul with us, then I'm gonna call. We'll call Cecil. He lives here. He pays for it. This is ridiculous. We should be able to get a straight answer from somebody at the county. That can we take two acres, three acres out of that twenty six and use it for a non park use?
Well, we can follow up.
See what they say. And if they if if they give you any static or anything, give me a call. I'll I'll make the call. Doesn't bother me at all.
And I think we need to do that due diligence because one property is hard to come by. And we've been looking for quite some time and we had a pretty viable location. That didn't work out. So and we're gonna end up paying.
And we also don't know that October or August twenty second, they go to go to August twenty third or twenty fourth or September or October. I don't see anybody running and pounding these doors down to say, hey, I'm in line to buy that property either.
From the standpoint of the district to get its deposit back, we need to terminate it before the end of due diligence period. That's for the twenty second.
We can terminate that and then.
My my idea is then. My deal is what I would go along with in deferring this to. Basis, the basis that we get something that we can see to that we know if we go to that park. We're not going down. We're going down a dead end road because right now we let that thing go and we lose. We have nowhere to go.
Well, I wish we'd have started down the park route about two years ago.
Do what now?
I wish we had investigated it about two years ago, first couple of times this was coming up to see if we could get that restriction. Now we would know.
Well, I think we have had those discussions.
We have.
We never jumped. I mean, that's.
Because of the time. So maybe we'll work a parallel course. It is as it is now, so we're kind of holding off.
So, you know, I make the motion that we defer to the the decision on this until the eighteenth. That staff comes back to us with a more definitive answer that we have an opportunity to file and go for the rebuilding.
Well, I don't. Do we? We don't need a motion on this item, do we?
I I think we did. We just tabled this the next board meeting.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
We continue. Yeah.
Okay, so we will table. Thank you, staff. Next is.
Well, what before we leave that, are we gonna pursue at least looking at what it would take for the the park?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. That's the major piece of that. So we need to look at, you know, doing our due diligence on probability of of rezoning. I'd love to get any precedent or historical examples of when, you know, a like for like zoning was changed. And then we also need to kick kick the tires on on the the new property, on whether or not, you know, how viable. That.
Getting vacation.
Getting vacation for that utilities.
The key is to find out if there are any utilities in it. That that is gonna make a big difference.
Other utilities in it and if not, how?
My knowledge is.
Probability for vacate.
Who does it?
My my knowledge of it is going being over there a lot of times. I see nothing there. It borders up against a lake. And it borders up to the front against the road. The only reason that there would be any utilities there is if somebody had planned on building something and somebody ran the utility in advance of that. And you can tell those trees, they grow up over there. That thing hasn't been touched.
So who who gives us that answer?
The county.
We'll work.
We're a surveyor. We can do locates out there.
All right, so let's keep moving. We have four B utility truck acquisition.
Just for the, yes, the.
So our utilities team is fully staffed finally, what a year or two. And in doing so, we need an additional utilities truck with the boxes and security measures. This is the request from our utilities director to purchase that since it is beyond my means of authority.
You tell us everything. Is this a Ford one fifty, two fifty, six fifty? What is this?
I believe it's a three fifty F three fifty Ford.
F three fifty?
Yes, sir.
And it comes with the boxes and everything on the back, so we'll be good to go as soon as it's in the parking lot, minus putting graphics on it and all that.
I'll second that move.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And for those that are coming in, there is one seat up front if someone needs to needs to sit down. Moving on to four C release of developer bond for Karina.
So again, with the review of all of the bond, the bonds that are in the district's hands, this is one that's been outstanding for quite some time. Again, this is per the permit period annual. After three years, we release the remaining ten percent. So this is requesting the authorization to let me release the remaining ten percent.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Item D Waterford Village license plate reader.
Waterford Village has come forward requesting to install a license plate reader in one of the mediums, which happens to be in the district's right of way. There the cost is all on them. They're doing it for their neighborhood. There's no cost at all involved with us. We're just looking for the board's approval to go ahead and give them permission to install. The license plate reader in our right of way.
Is that tied up to these?
It won't be. It had nothing to do with ours. I don't know what kind of agreement they made on their side. It's not part of our system. It's not part of our system. It is not.
It's part of their access control.
They may have made a deal with the sheriff. I don't know, but it's not part of a gateway. It's a separate reader.
I have no problem. I'll I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Great, thank you. Item E Parks and recreational truck acquisition.
I can't find out who it is.
Twenty five thousand.
I can't.
Staff's recommending this. That's recommended. Motion to approve it. I'm assuming that this is in our budget.
We would have to move some money from the capital reserves in order to purchase this.
Make the motion.
I'll second your motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Thank you.
So item F. This is this is interesting.
This is more of a very, very preliminary discussion for electric charging stations. Within Gateway, if the board is even interested in us pursuing this, we'll start to do some homework on it. They are becoming more prominent as so are electric vehicles. So this could this could or would be an added amenity. To Gateway. If the board is not interested in us pursuing them, we won't do any homework and it'll be that.
Is this something that we would we would cover the cost on?
We would call the company to do a turnkey and they would handle it themselves.
But we.
We subsidize it. Who's who's paying the power cost?
All of that would be part of the due diligence and looking, working with the company and finding all of that. But a lot of the other municipalities are hiring. An electric company to come in, install the system, manage, maintain, manage the system. Handle payments and.
Any idea where we put it, where it's gonna go?
Again, that's part of the due diligence and and looking.
Better question, who's gonna use it?
Well, there's quite a few electric vehicles in the in the community.
Yeah, but I mean, they never come to the meeting.
Well, it would be here if it would be.
Charging station.
Like like Bill sometimes says, ain't no way in hell I'm voting on this.
Is this possible for this to be revenue generating as well?
That's part of the due diligence that I'm learning with its community development districts. They're not treated like municipalities, but it's something Tony and I could work through.
What I would probably say to this is. I mean, I I don't have any problem doing the due diligence, but I think there's a lot going on right now. Why don't we table this for a little while if the board doesn't have a problem? Let's just put it on a.
Yeah, number.
Potential future discussion topic. I think there's a lot going on. And we wouldn't. I don't think we'd be jumping on this.
Tap into the federal initiatives.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We just bought two gasoline powered trucks. Which would indicate that we're not gonna go electric anytime soon. But those trucks will be have to be replaced in three, four, or five years. And it's possible that the electric vehicles are the only ones that new ones are gonna be available.
We'll we'll cross that bridge when we get there. Okay, for those of you that have joined, I appreciate. Some of you having to having to stand. We have pulled some of the earlier resolutions. We pushed them back to four o'clock and make sure that anyone that was gonna be attending. Is here today. So we will jump into our previous resolution item. A through. And Tony, you want to open us up here?
Anyway, I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, the numbers arrived after beginning the meeting, if they wish to sign up to speak on these items. And the items for purposes of today, all the consideration in Laura has the speaker slips. And some people have already filled them out and handed them to her. Anybody that wishes to speak during the back of the room on the platform where Mrs. Flaherty is. Fill them out and hand them to Laura.
And can you, Tony, if you don't mind? Is what people may comment on may change based on what our potential direction is for for those resolutions. So do you mind providing an overview on what we're looking to accomplish in the A through?
And then what I would suggest.
And then we can do public comments.
Or typically, or the board could hear the presentations from the engineer and master engineers report. And from Russ on the amended or master master amended and restated assessment methodology report and then allow the public to comment on on those. The items for consideration, it's agenda items, Roman numeral six A. It's a consideration of adoption of a resolution. Twenty twenty two dash eighteen repeals the prior resolution. Twenty twenty two dash twelve and would adopt an amended and restated engineers report and an amended and restated assessment report. Back in early this year in June, the board adopted this prior resolution two thousand twenty two dash twelve. Then adopted a master engineers report with regards to capital improvement program. And it outlined capital projects and estimated costs for those capital projects. At the same time, at that time, the board also adopted an assessment of methodology report prepared by. Consultant that took the cost of that program to fund those capital improvements. And determine whether or not it be appropriate to allocate the benefit of those improvements to various properties within the district. And if so, the amount of the benefit that would accrue to the various properties. The board adopted that resolution two thousand twenty two dash twelve. And thereafter adopted a second resolution. That set the public hearing for today at at four P M. Since the and then the public was sent the notices, the big ad in the papers. And since the time of the original resolutions adopted back in June. There was consideration with regards to benefits that may accrue to properties outside called the unincorporated portion of Gateway. And so amended and restated engineers report has been prepared. And Fred Middle of Tetra Tech prepared that primary author. He's here to, again, present it in detail for the public. That is now here and for the board. And then Russ Wire took that data information and there's also other assistance from Rhonda Mossing, who's on the phone. I believe who are the finance team or financial consultant. That with F M S, no, not with F M S bonds. That's another. M P, sorry. And so that to determine what the ultimate sizing of any borrowing would be or we would go to the court to validate. To implement the capital improvement program. So we recommended that the board, we have consideration and the public can sign up, I'd suggest, to speak to both items. The resolution proposed resolution two thousand twenty two. The resolution, proposed resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighteen, which would repeal the prior resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve adopting an amended and restated engineers report and amended and restated assessment report. And also the other item would be a consideration of adoption of a resolution twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, repealing resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirteen. And that would set a public hearing date for October sixth, twenty twenty-two at five P M. Where at that time, the board would sit, it's what they call a board of equalization, to hear any comments, objections to the proposed assessment and levy of assessments. To make a determination, to file a determination as to the levying of the assessment. And so I think the public, if they want to sign up, would be Roman numeral six A and Roman numeral six B.
Okay.
And then we have Roman numeral six C is sort of a backup, depending upon what happens with six A and six B.
So let me give you just a quick layman's terminology for all that. So we made, there were some changes to, to our plan, which impacted the engineer report, impacted the assessment methodology. Because there were changes there, the, the process for the bond validation, we basically have to go back and, and go through some of those steps. By doing so, we would have to cancel the bond, the public hearing for today because there's changes. So at four o'clock, we would have had a public hearing for the bond validation. That is now canceled. We'll go through these resolutions. We will prove basically the revisions for those. And then we'll re, reschedule the, the public hearing for October sixth.
Yes, for the.
But you're still open to make any comments around, you know, the bond itself, what's in the C I P, whatever. So if you want to make comments, that's fine. But step one is for us to go through and revise these, these resolutions. Step two is to come back for the public hearing October sixth, which will be, which we vote on. That will give you the opportunity to again, voice your opinion, ask any questions. So I would say there's still some due diligence that will, that will take place between now and October sixth. There'll be communications, there'll be documentation and more, more transparency to, to some of the items. So we may not be able to answer all your questions today. If you get in the weeds, we may even say, hey, can we, you know, maybe push this? Because some of this communication will be going out, but I just wanted to let everyone know in a very short amount of time, we're making some changes today, which will impact the public hearing. We're pushing it to the October sixth.
And then just make sure that the, the bond amount that did not change is just the allocation of how it's getting divided, it's changing, but the total amount is going to stay the same.
Yeah. Okay.
So I would suggest that what might be appropriate now then, I'm sorry?
To have the engineers.
Yeah, engineer. And then Rhonda, do you, would you want to make any introductory comments before Fred makes a presentation of the amended and restated engineers report?
I don't have anything to add from what you've already said, Tony.
Thank you.
Okay, is, are we going Fred?
Yes.
Fred still here?
Fred, Fred outside? Is Fred outside?
I wonder if he, well, he didn't fill.
Did he think he was done?
He might have, you thought, you think he thought he was done at three?
No, we asked him to stay until four o'clock to repeat everything all over again.
Russ, do you want to, can we leave with Russ?
I, I suggest because Russ's report is based and predicated upon the amended restated engineers.
Well, I, I think the big thing is that the people need to understand that the engineering report and the itemization of the things that were in that report have not changed at all. The only thing that's on there is there's a couple of asterisks that says the costs are going to be shared, not only with Gateway, but with public reserve. That is it. That's issue one. The second issue is, is that keep in mind, and I've tried to tell as many people that have called me, this is a bond validation. There has not been one decision made to spend one penny of that fifty-eight million. That is a separate process. Each one of those, the park, very controversial, stormwater management, the building, all of those things have to come through the board as a separate and distinct approval on a bond. They may or may not happen. The thousand and sixteen, and we get tied up in this legalese crap. That newspaper article, a Philadelphia lawyer couldn't understand it. But it's what we had to do. What it's saying is, is that if we take and go out, and contrary to what my neighbor, he and I don't agree on this. If I can take and go and finance something that's got a twenty, thirty year service life, I want to finance that for as long as I can. For one reason, why do I want to do it for five years, have Billy Bob in New York that hadn't come down here?
No offense to Billy Bob from New York.
Just, just New York. Comes down here in six years and sends all of us a Christmas card because we've already paid for it. That's not right. So this validation only allows us the opportunity by state law and statute, C D Ds can only go for five year funding.
Well.
The only. Without going, I wasn't done, without validating. This is what we're going through. Whether we make that engineers report fifty-eight million or we make it fifty-eight thousand. It needs to cover the cost of the things that we can do such that they're itemized to allow us to get the approval of the people that make the. That deal that ended in the. And the calculated on that we would spend, if today would have been the day we approved it, if we would spend all fifty-eight million tomorrow.
Well, and even.
And we're not doing that.
And even in that case, your, next year's assessment, zero dollars for this will be impacted in your assessment. So we're not, we're not talking about, so next year's assessment.
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three. What we're talking about this bond validation, there'd be zero dollars impacting that assessment. We are talking about years two, three, four, and so on and so forth. This is a ten year plan that basically could cover initiatives over the next twenty, you know, twenty, could be twenty plus years. And we did, I will tell you, there are some things that we put in there because this is a consolidated effort. It is more effective and more efficient to take multiple items, bulk them together and to secure the funding allocation from an approval perspective. In, in bulk, as opposed to doing those in five, individually over five, ten times. And the last thing I'll say is the, we're looking at doing that in, in phases too. So there's, we're doing, so it's a ten year plan to cover probably twenty, twenty years of, of, of impact. But we're doing it in three year priorities. So the staff is taking, taking all of these projects. Some are a little soft, I'll say, and we, we did that on purpose, just because if we're going to get approval, we need to, you know, look at everything that we might want to do. But staff has gone through and identified the, the highest priority of things that are critical to the community that need to be done, let's call it now, which is in the next, you know, couple of years. That's part of, really, let's call it phase one. It's based on a three year plan. But that work or the impact to you would be only a portion of those dollars and you wouldn't even see that until year two, year two, three, four.
You want to, just to just from the standpoint of clarification, the, any assessments associated with any bonds issued pursuant to this financing program would not be on the tax bill that we receive this November. In other words, the idea is that assuming the bonds are validated, the assessment, everything's validated. Then there'll be, as the board has mentioned, a separate consideration of issuing a series of bonds. And once the, a bond is issued, a series of bonds issued, then the money comes in the door and the money is used for that particular project. The next ensuing fiscal year is when the first levy, the assessments for that bond series would be imposed and collected. Rhonda, would you want to also walk through the process for the board, explain your credentials to the community and again to the board for how you see it from a financing perspective?
So I'm Rhonda Mossing with M B S Capital Markets and the board retained us as your underwriter to, to work with the board and the staff for the issuance of the bonds. As Tony explained and, and Mr. Banks, the, the bonds will be issued in increments and phases. And it'll be subject to a future supplemental engineers report and supplemental assessment methodology report that will drill down onto the specific project that the board wants to undertake and the financing for that project. So after this public hearing where the bonds are validated, that, that sets the cap on the total amount of debt that the district can issue under this validation, then we'll drill down onto the first project over the next couple of months to determine what that project is going to encompass and get some bearing firm costs on what the, what the project scope and costs will be. And then we'll put together the first bond financing and bring that back to the board for their consideration. Not only of the project, but of the allocation of the assessments and the total amount of debt that the board wants to issue for this project. And as part of that, during the construction period, we'll be adding to the cost of the bond issue, a capitalized interest period so that you won't receive an assessment on your tax bill until the capitalized interest period runs out, which is typically concurrent with the, the construction period for which the improvements are under construction. So you won't actually get an assessment until the improvements are completed and placed into service. Is that what you want me to cover?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you, Doug, for allowing Rhonda to do that.
Absolutely. More lawyers.
Yeah, Laura, that's why.
We are waiting for Fred, our, our district engineer to go back to the building so we can answer questions. The logical next step here would be, let's go into public comments. So we will go, if you have, if you would like to speak and you have it signed, this little sheet, make sure that you do that. We'll start at the top. And when you get up to the point, if you wouldn't mind, just say your name, where you, where you reside, and we do need you to come up to the.
And there's a five minute time limit. There's a timer thing up here. It'll warn you. It turns yellow when it's getting close. So first on the list is Kathy Flaherty from Stony Brook regarding the assessment.
And please note, your input is very valuable and I'm not trying to be rude by cutting off, but we don't set limits. We will be here till nine o'clock. So we want to give you an opportunity, but I do, if you have.
I didn't start yet.
I grant you back thirty seconds.
I didn't start it yet.
Kathleen Flaherty, Stony Brook. Okay, first of all.
We got the mic.
I'm sorry, I was short.
Can't hear anybody.
I'm sorry, Bill. I'm, I'll yell. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay. Okay. Fact is that you wouldn't be giving any assessment or charge anybody this year is because the budget has already gone through, so people should know that.
But it hasn't been approved yet.
But, but that's only a matter of.
Approving.
All right. The second thing is, you know, I, I feel that this is not a good time for the bonding issue for its validation. Because there are a number of people in Stony Brook alone who cannot afford to pay their H O A fees. And I'm sure that's everywhere in other communities because of inflation. So this to them is looking like it's going to cost them more money. I think you need to wait to see if inflation goes down. And I think that would be a more appropriate time to do a, a bond issue. And, you know, you're already planning that in two or three months, you're going to do the first one. So you know that next year it's going to be added on. So, and that's about all I'm going to say. I'm just stating those facts because that's reality. Did you hear me, Bill?
Yes, I did. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next is Steve Fleming from Bristol Park.
Well, and just, just for clarification, we wouldn't start any of this work until it was approved. So which we're looking at earliest.
At least a year.
At least a year out before we even start any projects, which means that, yeah, again, your assessments will not be impacted at all next year through any of this work. The bond validation is basically just establishing, I've heard a line of credit, and that's probably maybe not the right terminology. But we can't use that line of credit until those items are approved. So.
And built, as Martha said, which I didn't know. So you have to be built. So a year just to do it and then how long it takes to get it done.
Looking at two or three years out before any of this would be impacted. And we're, we absolutely know what the state of the economy is, but it doesn't stop us from planning ahead and trying to project out. So just want to say that, and I think you guys understand.
I just want to, before your time starts, Patricia Howell, you're up next.
Steve Fleming, Bristol Park. I understand this is a tough job you guys have. I don't always agree with everything you do, but it is what it is. I've kind of went over your budget. Looked some things up. Fifty-eight million dollars is a lot of money. And I realize the community is growing. Just a couple of things, the pool, the pool thing that you guys are looking to do. I looked up some numbers and there's basically forty-six hundred homes in Bristol Park. Twenty-seven different communities. And out of those twenty-seven communities, you have ten communities that have their own pools. Now, looking at the forty-six hundred, I did some more research and found that twenty-six percent of the homes in Bristol Park have their own pools in their backyard. Now, my wife goes up to the Gateway Commons Pool twice a week. There might be twelve people up there at any time. I, I think the pool we have is fine. I don't think we need, what is it, seven million dollars for that, that project for the pool and that? I forget what it is, but it's a lot of money. I think, like the previous speaker was saying, nine point one percent inflation right now. Seven million is a lot of money. And Doug, what you were saying about building our new building, I think that's a great idea to use what we have up here already rather than buy another piece of property. This is the worst time in the world to be buying property. Real estate prices are through the roof. My little two hundred and fifty thousand dollars home, they say it's worth four hundred and fifty. There's no way. So the market's going to correct itself, just like it did in two thousand and eight. The market will correct itself. Then if we, if we can't get that approved, then if we need to buy some property, it might a much easier thing for us to do at a better price. Plus the cost of building right now is through the roof. The reason our homes have went up so much because nobody wants to buy a new home. The cost is high. They want to buy a home that's already built. So just, there's so many ways we could save a lot of money right now. And I think using what we have up here at the commons, I don't think we need a theater right now at this point in time. I don't think we need another pool. The pool we got is hardly used anyway. So with that being said, like we got to really give, give some thought to. Another, another number I found that out of the forty-six hundred people, twenty-nine percent of the people in this area are at retirement age, are nearing retirement age. And we're all on fixed incomes. And it's, it's really, really tough right now with nine, pardon. I got a five point nine percent social security raise and my Medicare went up six percent. So I'm one percent in the hole. So thank you for your time. Thanks for listening and do the best you can. I know my board in Bristol Park is doing everything they can to try to keep our HOAs the same for next year, just based on what's going on. And I think that's what you all should be doing. Cut every corner you can, just to get by until we see what happens to the economy. Thank you for your.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, who's next? And I hate, hate to say this, but if you could reserve some clapping, that's, we normally don't do that. I know, it was a great speech. I'll give you a high five, but thank you.
Patricia Howell from Royal Greens Con Association. And then after her is Gary Meyer, Meyer from Bristol Park.
Yes, I agree with everything this gentleman just said.
Where are you from?
Royal Greens Condominiums, Patricia Howell. It's the condominiums right down Gateway there. First of all, I want to say thank you. I know you have a very ungrateful job, what you do. So I appreciate all of you. I'm going to give you a reality check. Formula that I used to give to my sons when they were babies is the same formula that they sell today. A can of formula used to cost seventy-five cents to a dollar twenty-five. That very same can today costs a hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. And that's just one thing. We have many young couples that live in Gateway, young children and babies. They, they've had to take the brunt of the food costs, the insurance costs, their school costs, daycare, day camp. So I urge you to think about them before you increase or look for new things to do. Let's maintain what we have. As far as the salaries and benefits, last year you asked us for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a salary adjustment. This year you're asking for a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for salaries and benefits. We are in a recession. You don't get a raise. I worked for the county years ago. We didn't get a raise for four years. You put salary and benefits on trees. Lee Health has done it. We can do it. I don't think anybody should expect a raise right now. We're, we're all going through a difficult time and we're all going to go through it together. I don't think it's fair for some to, to be able to make money at this time. I mean, to have an increase in their income when we're all suffering. It's public service. Do what's good for the community is what I'm asking you. Be good shepherds of our funds and do what's right. That's all I have to say.
Right. Thank you very much. Who did you say was up next, Laura?
Gary Meyer.
Uh, Gary Mayer.
Oh, October sixth, I'm sorry, October sixth meeting. Could you look at putting that off until November when all the snowbirds are here?
Yeah, I don't think we can do that.
Just a suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
After Gary, Gary says, pool, land purchase, and new building. And then on deck is Lisa Tiru. Sorry if I'm slaughtering your names.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, our board, public here. I appreciate what you do do. However, I agree with the previous speakers. This bond should be tabled. Building costs out of control. Materials, land especially, is out of control right now. Stabilization of the economy needs to be coming first to help all of us within this room and our community of Gateway. The pool issue, I think ten years ago, this pool issue came up with redoing botanical gardens and pools and tennis courts. That should be tabled as it was ten years ago. Two years ago, I think it was, that it was brought up on this board again to try to get this pool acreage redone. I understand that it was put off indefinitely. And here we are again discussing remitigation of all that land and putting up all of this, putting more money up there, as previous speaker said. Once again, it's on the books. And by your words, this was put off indefinitely. Does the word indefinitely mean through your methodology, anytime you get a, a spur to do this, you're going to just put it on the agenda again to spend more money? This bond is far too much, needs to be tuned down quite a bit, and should not be floated at this point in time to affect all of us with the amount of monies that we don't have coming in as far as pensions, social securities, and I can go on and on about raises, nine-point-three inflationary rate. So with the pool issue, building issue, land purchase issue, I think is ludicrous at this point in time in this economy. You should not even be considering this to put another burden on our community for cost factors, especially that, again, not to reiterate, that pool project seems to be a thorn in somebody's side, that they want to keep bringing it up. And again, your board decided, put off indefinitely. Again, through your methodology, the word indefinitely may have been changed, as far as I know. It meant indefinitely, not the following year. So I understand all your methodologies and how you think money should be spent for the future. It's a great idea, but not in this economy, to continue to spend float bonds of millions for projects. Let's wait. Let's wait and see in the next year or two. Do you really need a building? High costs, materials are out of control, copper wires out of control. The areas that you're going to buy, why can't you build here with the amount of land that you have? Why can't you put a second story on this structure or add to the back? That whole lot over there is empty. I don't even see any boats in it anymore.
Excuse me?
Why can't this be expanded here? Can you answer that?
I can answer that. You want to go?
Yeah, yeah. But first of all, let's, let's get something straight here.
Hold on, let's make sure.
This is the confusion that's coming.
Hold on, I want to make sure. Are you, are you done? Are you?
Yeah, I think that, I think that this, as far as floating this bond, asking for this kind of money, for out of all of us, and I'm not talking just in this room, I'm talking the communities, to add this to us, whether it's two years, whether it's indefinitely, and it shows up again next year or this year, within six months.
Yeah, okay. You've already said that. I just wanted to make sure you were.
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate your time, and I don't mean to rile you, but I think this has to be brought out, and everybody understands. This bond has to be stopped.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Let's make sure we understand this, because I've had this problem, and I was going to send something out in Gateway next door, but I figured it, better not do that. It never ends. We are not doing a bond. I don't know what I have to say. I guarantee you, if we had to do something to do with spending that ten millions for that park, hell would freeze before I'd approve it. I'm not going to do it. But we're not doing a bond. We're doing a bond validation. We can do this bond validation and not spend a penny for the next ten years. But if we do, because it's something we have to do, and contrary to what you were saying about the, the, the economy and all that, go tell that to South Florida Water Management District, because they don't give a damn what we, we have over here in the way of pain. Their deal is, you've got lakes that don't comply, fix them. But the issue is, we're not spending any money on a bond. That's not what this is about. When we get this, and if we get this approved, and then we need to proceed, there will be plenty of time and opportunity for residents to come back in and say, don't spend it for whatever it is that you're planning on spending it on. We realize that, but we're not approving a bond tonight, not for one penny. We're approving a bond validation. It's a methodology. It simply allows us to borrow the money for a longer period of time. It's that simple.
And even in October, we won't be approving a bond. We'll be approving the validation at that time. And then do you want to touch into the why we cannot build here?
Well, first of all, this building is designed to take a second floor. Second thing is, is that we have limitations from the county on the space we have out here. So it just, it doesn't fit. It's a round peg in a square hole.
We've done that, but we've done about at least two generations of revising this building, adding the modular. We had problems there. So there's, we have done due diligence. We're not just throwing these items out there without due diligence.
And we've got mold in the building behind us. We've got to get our staff out of there. We've got issues. We've got issues. And we've looked at the alternatives. The only alternative is to, to build. Now, there's options on where we build, and that's what we talked about earlier. But just get it out of your heads tonight. We are not approving a bond.
And so I want to keep moving around. I don't, I don't want to respond to every.
Clarification. The board is not issuing bonds.
That's right.
I think that's the key. The term, when the gentleman used the term floating bonds, that's not, is what's occurring. The board.
Order, order, please, guys.
The board, the board has authorized, and it's been filed, is a bond validation complaint that would authorize the issuance at a future point in time of up to eighty million dollars in bonds. It doesn't issue the bond. It authorizes the issuance. And then at the point in time where the project is determined to be built, then the bond, then the, the board would go to Rhonda. Rhonda will put the numbers together, size a bond issue for that project, and then, then it will come back to this board, number one, approve that particular project, and number two, to authorize the issuance of a series of bonds. And then when that bond series gets issued, that's basically the borrow. The bonds get sold, the money comes in, and that's when the assessments will then need to repay the bonds. But that's not what's occurring through this process today. Rhonda, do I need to, uh, you need to correct me? I always defer to Rhonda if necessary.
No, no, ma'am, we, we can't allow comments.
Rhonda, is there anything that you need to correct as to what I said or what the board has said?
No, that, that's absolutely right. Every, anytime that the district decides to butt, issue the bonds in the future, they'll have to come back to the board to do that.
And so as we go forward, the last thing I want to say is, your assessments are impacted zero with everything we're talking about today for the next year. We're at a minimum of two to three years out. If we do approve any spending through this bond process, a minimum of two to three years out before you'd be impacted at all. So again, next year's assessment, zero impact. You're at least a minimum of two to three years out if we get approval to spend any dollars moving forward. So, uh, who's the next speaker?
Lisa Tiru. And then our deck is Susan Vale. Lisa says, says land purchase and building. And if anyone has signed up to speak, and someone has already made your point, um, I don't know.
Well, we've, we've heard it. Have already made my point. My name is Lisa Tiru. I live in Bristol Park. This is my first meeting, because normally we're not here for the month of August. Um, I'm not going to bother to repeat everything that was stated here. Um, I think it's the feeling of most of the community that this is just not a good time to levy these kind of assessments and burdens on the community when we're having a tough time. So I thank you for your time. I thank you for the work that you do. I plan to attend more meetings, and, um, it was nice to meet you.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Okay, and who did you say was up next?
Uh, Susan Vale. It just says general question. And on deck after her is Roseanne Mallett.
Hi, my name's Susan Vale, and I live in the cottages in Gateway. And, um, first to the board and to the staff, you know, thank you for your hard work. I know this is very hard, and it's very frustrating. To us, um, some of us have just seen this, and I've just moved to the community. Um, and so these questions come up. Y'all have been working on this for a really long time. Some of us are just seeing this. So that's where some of this is coming from. Um, my questions are more, um, process-wise. I come from a project management background. So I just, I'm going to just redo my questions, and we're just going to go like that. Based on the interest rates, they're high. Cost of goods, land are high. Um, and they're going higher, as we know, it's repeated. But is this the wisest time to be doing this? That's my question. Um, then will the assessment, once you get to it, be adjusted per home value, or is it a blanket, um, value each home, no matter what size or value, gets charged the same amount? Uh, the next is, will the value of work be spread equitably, um, in the sub-communities? And what I mean, and specifically, it's about that park improvement. It seems like there's a value somewhere, and it's already been stated, a lot of people have pools, but I don't know if we need a, you know, glitzy park. Is it equitable? Um, how is the value, let's see, what projects are emergent on your list? What's emergent? What do you absolutely have to do before it falls apart? It's not an I-want list, but what do you really, really need to do? Administratively, there are several items that are stated on the engineer's report that are underway. How are they going to be funded now? Uh, provide a breakdown of how the values were derived. So the engineer's report, did he use like, um, uh, estimates like from a contractor, or was this historical value, or was this like RS mean data? How were those numbers created? Um, what is the level of effort for the professional fees? And why is the software needed? Um, how specifically will it benefit the community? ADA compliance. I didn't see any items. I just saw ten thousand, ten thousand, ten thousand, or repetitive number. What specifically are those items that you need to fix for ADA? Um, geographical information. Now, that should be information that has been given to you by the developers. Um, I'm not really sure why you need extra information. You should already have, or you should have a process to implement current information. Um, regarding the storage facility in the building, is it really needed? And this is repeat, repeated. Um, can the existing facilities be renovated to accommodate the existing site? I just want to kind of go back to y'all, we're talking about, talking with Lee County. In the past, what I've done is had a one-on-one meeting, not, you know, look stuff up on the internet, but actually sit down with the county commissioners. We are a public entity. So we're public money, and we can talk the same language. So has that meeting been put together? And then, um, what happens to the, this site if you buy new land and you build out the other? What are you going to do with this? Um, and then I kind of have similar, like water management, roadway, landscape, parks and rec, three questions for all segments. Why are these projects needed? Really clearly. What's the process in the past to maintain them? So what are your PMs? Do you have a system of PMs for all these facilities? It's like you have lift stations and things like that to be maintained? What is that process and schedule? And then how is completed work verified? And, um, how do you really know that it really got done? Who checks it? Who checks it off? Or are you just letting contractors say, I'm done? Um, those are my questions, and they're very, you know, that's his high level. I went a lot lower level than that, but, um, that's just stuff I'd like to know.
Well, if, I just want to put this out there, that if anybody has those particular questions, staff is more than happy to meet with you or email the customer care inbox that we have. Um, and we have been trying to stay on top of those daily, um, and getting detailed responses back. So please utilize those services. Contact us. We'd be more than happy to meet with you and go over those details.
Jessica, can you also, just while everyone's here, and for the record, um, how are we delivering information today? What, what channels are we sending in communication and sending in information out?
So first and foremost, go to our district website. Um, that's number one. We are trying to get more active on social media through Facebook, um, or stop into the office. But those are really the only two forms that we have right now. But we are working on, on producing.
And we're sending stuff directly out as well.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So, thank you. We appreciate it. And up next.
All right, up next is Roseanne Mallett, and then Dorothy Frida is on deck. Uh, Roseanne says, resolution twenty-two, eighteen, bond issue, CIP list, and assessment.
Only because Roseanne didn't know what to put down.
You're allowed to change. You can design on the fly here.
Hi, my name is Roseanne Mallett. I live over in Gateway Greens. Um, I heard what everybody said. And I will just say, as a, as a former financial advisor, um, I would like to interject some, um, basic comments here. First of all, I appreciate the need to plan, whether it's this board or an individual household. And I think that's what you're trying to do, plan. Um, I can take exception to some of the plans, as I'm sure most of the audience will as well. So in this venue of planning, my first question really is, um, and again, before I go there, I will also say that I support and understand the numerical need to go from a five-year pay structure to twenty years. It does spread the numbers out. It does hit us a little bit less every single year. So the concept of planning, the concept of paying it back over a longer period of time, I don't think those are the areas of objection. I think the areas of objection are the projects themselves. Um, I read the twenty-nine pages of the engineering report, and beautifully written. However, I walked away with no understanding as to why any one particular project needed doing. Uh, when we go to replace or repay roads in Gateway, we have to support the position with the concept that, uh, roads only last X number of years in Florida. The age of the roads is X, and we have to go ahead and, and spend this money. They don't look bad. I'm from the north, and unless the pothole was going to blow your axle, you didn't repay. So, uh, but Florida.
Well, there's probably a reason why you're here now, too.
That's right. But Florida's different. Things, things age different things differently, and I, and I get it all. Uh, but I think what this board can do to gain a little more support of the community is give us, um, bullet points, four, five, ten, whatever, on a project. This has to be done for this reason. And give us maybe the upside. There's a lot of discussion about renovating the park, uh, for example. It's an expensive item, and not all of us use the park. It's family-friendly. It'll bring in buyers that have families. That's good for housing values. I get that. Uh, but the question is, um, why now? Uh, why, why, is that one of those that we can put on the not necessary list? Just not to repeat what everybody said, we out here as a community, most households are having to address not only the high inflation, but the fact that the housing values are rolling over. So I think we're all feeling a little less rich. And as a result, we as individuals have to go through our expenses and create two columns, necessary and gee, I'd love to, but. Um, you mentioned phases. I do not see these projects listed as phases. So that would be my first question. And I think somebody else said, give us the priorities. I'm all for water. We drink it. We water our plants. We wash anything that pertains to the waters. I think we have to address whether we like it or not. It's infrastructure. The beautification items, I think, should be in the last possible phase. Uh, but before I give up my time, how much do I have? Um, a minute thirty? Okay. Um, what power do we have out here? If we allow, for example, this bond, do we have any say on the bond validation, or is that just the board? Do we have any say on the projects that are selected, or is that just the board?
There is a, there is a vote of public opinion, but ultimately, decision is up to the board.
It's all the board.
Yes, ma'am.
So therefore, you guys set the priorities. You set, okay, fine. Um, in which case, I may retract my support of, yes, extending the pay date, because if you are forced to pay something back in five years, the hit to us is going to be astronomical. And if you want to see a revolution, by all means, do that. So the concern is spreading it out. I understand it financially. I understand it mathematically, and I understand. and I understand it to hit to the individual household. But I think it gives you perhaps a little bit too much power. One last question, there are X number of people that live in this community, and I would like to know if the board can address, does every household in this community pay the same for operational and capital costs? Whether it's somebody in the Gateway area or Pelican Preserve?
Well, we'll address that when Russ.
The, the issue is, they do in Gateway and they do in Pelican, but the two do not cross because they got separate budgets. The only place where's the differentiation is in our enterprise fund, which we are not talking about here. Enterprise fund is your utilities, those are different, based on the water you use. If you use more water, you're gonna pay more than your neighbor.
So the capital budget would be spread over all houses equally?
If you noticed in that, four categories, single-family home, multi-family home, the golf course, and our commercial users. All singles are the same, all multis are the same.
Okay.
The golf courses, the golf course.
So there are categories.
And one last thing, Rose, if you go and have read, guess if I show ahead, how many people have read the engineer's report? Fantastic, then you all know that in appendix A is a complete 10-year breakdown of the $58 million and how it's going to be spent.
Yes, but there's no categorization of phase one, two, and three. And if this bond validation at 58-
Prioritization, one needs it to be done first.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah. And we'll get to that, we're just, that's part of due diligence, we're just not there yet.
Okay.
Yeah, so thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Rose.
All right, next up is Dorothy Frida, and then after her is Nathan Tuttle. Dorothy says, capital improvement planned.
Dorothy Frida and I live in Gateway Greens. You, I understand your bond validation, why you're doing it, but you're about looking to do, get bond validation on a fun amount of money that we don't approve. So why you got, that's, again, if you're going out for $58 million, if we're not approving work done in the park, we don't feel it's necessary, why are you still going out for $58,000? We need to say what's, we need to be done, get the bond validation for those items, and then if there's still, the park is still thinks it needs to be done, we can discuss that at that time and then say how we're going to pay for that. Get a bond, pay for what we need and take everything else out.
Thank you.
Another one that people don't understand, I, I don't have a problem with that, except for one big issue. Every time we go back to the trough for the bond validation, I hate to say it to our attorney and I hate to say it to our bond people, they get richer. There is no harm, if we would go 58 million or 158 million, it does not cost us anymore to create the bond. If we take it back to 10 million right now, because of what, if everybody could vote and say, we take it back to 10 million, and then we need two more million or three more million, we go back and spend another $100,000 taking it up to that next level. It's just not, it's not good business.
Having a pocketbook that is so big, gives you so much authority on how much to spend and what we, even though you have the money, there's no con, there's no check.
There's a solution to that, and it's called the November election. If this board goes crazy, vote them out of office.
But we won't, that would be, we can vote them out of office after it's done, it's too late.
No, alls you have to do is put the threat of the, out of the office on the rerun. Alls you have to do is put the threat.
Well, let me just make a quick statement. And this is, I think it's pretty, it's directionally correct. This board, I think over the last four years, we have not approved a budget that's, I think, over single digits.
It's been right at 10%.
Right, right at 9, 10%, which again, you might say 2% is too much. But there is, there is historical, let's call it precedent of this board, at least staying within a specific threshold. I don't know if you care about that, if that matters to you at all, but I just wanted to at least throw it out there that we tried, we, we do try to be physically conservative whenever we can. Who's next?
Up next, we have Nathan Tuttle, and then our final request is from Terry Chau.
Hi, I'm Nate Tuttle, I'm in Hampton Greens and also have a building across from 711. My question is, on the commercial side, you've got the principal assessment of 10,629 in your thing, ballpark 829,000 assessment per unit, is that on all commercial buildings? Our buildings across the way are probably 500,000 value, maybe, on it? And an assessment of 829,000 on a commercial, is mine the same as Gartner?
No, they're all different. Do you know what your parcel ID is?
Not offhand.
Go to LIPA, get your parcel ID and go to this report that Russ did, and it'll tell you exactly what your calculation is. Every one of these are different, depends on how big your property is, how much, what we call impermeable surface you have. If you've got all blacktop, then your rate versus somebody that's got a lot of grass, yours is gonna be a lot higher because you create more water. So every commercial is different based upon administrative, their impact. Let's say you have a business that attracts a lot of cars, people, clients, you're going to get hit hard on the roadside. If you have a lot of blacktop, you're gonna get hard on the stormwater side. So every one of the commercials are different, and that's what Russ has tried to do in this deal. So alls you need to do is go to LIPA, find out what your parcel number is, and it'll tell you what the estimate is. And this estimate is, if we spend all 58 million, it's the max you will have to pay.
Okay.
Nate, if you wanna send us an email, if you wanna send us an email to the customer care, we can look at yours individually and send it to you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and that is the reason why we have the assessment methodology, because it's, it's statistically defendable and it's fair and equitable across the board. We can defend it.
Yeah, all single families are equal, but all commercials are not.
Okay, good. Then the other thing is, you know, the comment about how, you know, it's just a bond referendum or whatever it is, we could spend up to this much? I've never met a politician that doesn't spend what they have in their pocket. So it's kind of a, you know-
I'll tell you, I'm gonna get rid of one of them.
Low-budget volunteers.
It's funny to say that, but in reality, if we give 58 million or whatever the number is, funny how it always comes up, 58 million. The other thing is, living within budgets and cutting instead of, you said, you know, oh, every year we go up less than, single digits or in single digits. I own a business, when I have bad years, I can't just go out there and tell everyone, hey, sorry, prices are going up. I have to look and say, gee, what can I cut? What can I do less? And it'd be nice if the board would kinda look at some of that, instead of just, oh, no big deal, we'll just go after, it's just a little more, it's just a little more. Everyone has to pay their fair share. Well, when you're paying, that is a fair share. So living within budgets or, or reducing budgets during times like now, would, I think most people would appreciate it. Anyways, thanks for the answer, that was good on the commercial.
I, I think two points that Russ can address when he makes his presentation, Russ Wire, is number one, addressing the question that Jen raised, partially addressed with regards to the allocation, that number one. Number two, the assessments are not based upon value of the properties, that's the ad valorem tax that you pay, that's different, that is value. And then Russ can also address his experience over the years as both a financial advisor and assessment methodology person, and as a district manager for CDDs, as to the cap that can be validated, that will be validated versus how much is actually expended or issued in bonds. I represent a number of districts, I don't know any of them yet, that have issued the number of bonds that were validated, because depending upon the projects they ultimately do. So I think that's something that Russ may wanna touch upon when he gets up. And I don't know-
We've got one more public comment.
And then it's Fred on his way.
He's online.
Okay, thank you.
All right, our last speaker is Terry Chau.
That'd be me.
All right, he has bond phases and total costs.
And just, what community are you in, Terry?
Daniels Preserve.
Okay, thank you.
Just a few comments and a few questions, I guess. I've lived here seven years, I've used a pool twice. Hadn't been more than 10 people there at a time, I go by it daily and I see a handful of cars. I want the pool, don't get me wrong, it's important, we have to have a pool, we should have a pool. I think it's a very nice pool. I would like to see every penny needed to maintain it and keep it up, but I don't think we need to make it fancier because it's pretty minimal use, but that's just my comment. As I understand this, maybe you could explain to us better. I, I understand what you've said about the, we're just getting to authorization and I, I agree with that concept. It would be nice if we could have some insurance that as each bond phase comes up, we would have these meetings and this is what we're gonna do, bullet points, this is what we're gonna do, this is what we're gonna spend, talk about it then and then get the comment. I think the people would feel a little more comfortable being part of that discussion and you'd maybe feel more comfortable because you'd be with us or against us, whatever. If it would work like that, I think we'd all feel a little more comfortable. I don't have a problem with you asking for 100 million, whatever it is, and then you use whatever, but when you come time, when it comes time to spend it, okay, this is the project we wanna do, this is what it's gonna cost, and get the feedback, and we're ready to go with it. And is that, is that what we're talking about here in phases?
This is exactly what we're talking about, it's exactly what we're talking about. It was very simple and very well put by you. So when that time comes that this bond violation will go through, and here comes, let's see, project number one, the top priority emergency needs to be done, it's gonna be $1 million. It's still gonna come to the board and you guys are still gonna come in and say, okay, why does it need to be done? And then at that time, we'll explain to you, this is why it's critical, it's emergency, it's not. So at that time, we all will take in consideration, you know, everybody's opinion, as we always have, as I always have, and I believe this board has been, at that time, we'll make that decision to go forward, go not forward, amend the project, phase it out even more. But that's something that's gonna come, one, that particular project comes to the board and you guys will be notified, and then we'll invite you guys to come in and you have your say at that time, too. Exactly what that is.
We would be notified for each one of these.
Yes.
The notification process won't be a separate mail.
It's on the agenda.
It'll be the agenda and, but, but also, you have a board, in my opinion, district managers, that are very proactive on sending information out, so I think, and we've heard, I think the board's heard a lot of-
So it won't be mailing it, where you have to monitor your website.
Trying to keep that cost down, because that's about $3,000, $4,000 every time we do it.
The other thing is, I notice these costs here, it says like, not to exceed annual debt service assessment per unit. So I look at family, single family, $1,000, okay, for the year. It says total principal assessment per unit. That's kinda misleading because they don't, that's principal, they don't talk about the interest rate. In 20 years, that $12,000 would be $20,000.
Russ will talk about that in a minute. A hundred million plus, which includes the debt retirement over the period of time, is all factored in to be able to say that that max, if we borrow that whole 58 million tomorrow, would be 1,016 or whatever the number was.
For 20 years.
Each year for 20 years.
Yeah, if that's $20,000, it's not the number you have here, 12,899, it's just total principal-
We'll let, we'll let Russ make the presentation on that, he'll, he'll explain all that.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Okay, appreciate everyone's comments. I know sometimes, you know, when you're reading through things, it may not always be clear and you're not sitting in these meetings each month and you may not have the visibility to the things that we see on a regular basis. So appreciate your comments.
Doug, can I just mention one other thing? We have in the last week posted a, and it's actually in the back of the room, there's that blue sheet right there. That is the process, we posted that on Facebook this past week, and that's more of a simpler, simplified version of the process that we're currently in. So feel free to take a copy of that home.
I do have one quick question, since we actually have a big turnaround. Because I know we've been emailing the cams for the properties for additional information, and it's really up to that cam or that board to allow the cam to email blast the residents. So I know a few communities here do that, I know we do it, but how many of you, or if any of you, received the information directly from your cam?
You can, hey guys, if you'll do me a favor, if you'll just take, excuse me, in the back, if you'll just take those and pass them around, and if whoever wants one, just grab them. That way, we don't have to keep walking back and forth.
So then what I see is, if you guys could help us, so there is an opportunity for your HOA boards to pass out that information to you at no cost, because we are sending it to the, to the, all the board presidents and the cams. So you guys can go back to them and say, look, we know that you're getting the information from the district, give it to us. Like I said, I know some communities do it, some do, some, some of the recommendations, we try to do all of it, because the more information that my residents know, the better. So if you guys could take that, and we do meet with the board presidents once a quarter. So they are getting that information, so if you guys can go back to your boards and ask them to pass it on to you guys via email, then you'll get it.
Okay, so let's keep moving, do we have Russ on?
Fred?
Fred, I mean, sorry, Fred.
I, I appreciate you allowing me to come back up here. Bob Spencer, I live in Gateway Greens. Something I didn't ask you, on your methodology outline that was in the office here, if I understand this right, we're borrowing 58 million, if you approve that, and it's gonna cost us 24% interest. The total figure is 78.
What it is, is 58, hold on.
Is 78 million dollars.
What it is, is it's 58 million is the construction cost, up to 74, which is about another 16 million, is what we call the non-construction costs, which are your legal fees, your bond council fees and all of that. Then you've got the amortized interest over the period of the 20 years. All of that works out to be about $120 million.
Right.
That, over 20 years, that is the number that you work back to get to 1,016.
Charges $1,000 a year.
For 20 years.
No, charges $1,000 a year when you outline why we need a project and let's pay it as we go.
Yep, you get somebody to go along with that, but I don't think you're gonna get a contractor to do that.
We have no more speakers.
All right, we're frozen, thank you.
Fred is on the line.
Hopefully, I didn't mute him, Fred, are you there?
Fred, can you unmute yourself?
I don't know if you can. We'll, we'll need his initial or what he's dialed in as.
All right.
So we can-
Let's get Russ to, while we still got people here, explain the methodology.
I get you.
So we don't know which one Fred is, right?
I have no idea.
AJM.
AJM? I don't see an AJM.
We waited on, we're trying to pick Russ out, I mean, Fred out of this, I don't see an AJM.
There's no AJM.
No, I don't either. Let him set, I don't know what he's going to offer, we've already talked about everything. The big one is, is get Russ, that's the one that has, there's the money man.
Well, he needs to type it out, what they've changed.
Do you want to do a three-minute break so they can talk? Really suck it.
There's no AJM.
Ask him if he knows what caller he is.
Just hang up and call back, then you'll know, that probably passes.
I don't think you can, because he's called in, if he called in or is he online? Did he, if he called in, I have no idea who he is, there's a bunch of callers.
Tell him, is he on his phone?
Yeah, he's on, he's on his phone.
He just dialed the number?
Yeah.
Okay, so he can't turn his camera on?
Hello?
Good guess.
Hello?
Lucky guess.
Hello?
Can you hear us, Fred?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we're ready for you to give us the synopsis that you gave earlier with regards to the changes for the amended and restated master engineer's report.
Okay, so you can hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay. As we discussed earlier, the amended report, the, the amount you've been discussing this afternoon, the 58 million, is the same as what was in the original engineer's report. That has not changed. What did change was adding Pelican Preserve Assessment Area. So now, instead of just being the Gateway Assessment Area, there are two assessment areas. And there is a, a list, there's a, a number of projects that benefit Pelican Preserve, and they're in the administrative category and the water waste management category. In the administrative category, those projects are boardroom renovation and updates, professional fees, engineering and legal for the bond validation, accounting software. and the main district building, the administration building to replace the building you're in. And on the waterway management, the, the one project under that group of projects is the adjustable weirs in the, in the common flowways that control flooding and water management within that drainage basin. And that is the extent of the changes, which then impact the overall assessments that you're discussing.
Great, thank you, Fred, we appreciate it. So now moving on to Russ, he'll come up and just give us a high-level update on how the impacted assessment methodology might be a good idea, just very high level.
Yes.
What the assessment methodology is.
No problem. For the record, I'm Russ Wiley with Newland State Econometrics. I've been your assessment methodology consultant for the past three years or so. We started this whole process with the operational, which is your general assessment that you get from the district, which talks about maintaining our capital improvement items that are out there. That process I had developed a while ago based on bond issuance. So we went to operations and maintenance, so now we've come back to bond issue. So the benefit received are based on the same, what I would call silos of funds. So you have roadways, you have water management and you have administration. Your op, your operations and maintenance is basically done the same way. We didn't change the methodology from operations and maintenance. It's what, what we're determining, we're doing two things. We're determining the benefit that each property receives from roadway, water management and from administration. And then we're, we're, we make that determination, which determines if it's fair and equitable, as they call it. And past law has shown that the way we're doing it is fair and equitable. Roadways, I did it, there are three different things. When we did these, we took the entire CIP and put it in those categories, as we had mentioned. Originally, it was all within Gateway. However, in taking another look at it, we have realized that Pelican Reserve benefits, just like you do, from the administration building. It made sense, they're part of the district. And then the water management part of it, part of it is in Pelican Reserve and it's along the flowway and everybody benefits from the flowway. So those two items were actually divided. One, the flowway was done equally for Pelican Reserve and for Gateway. In other words, it was 750,000, we did 375,000 to each side. And then the building was done based on what we call equivalent assessment units. And they're measured, equivalent assessment units are measured a little differently over in Pelican Reserve than they are here. Here, each property gets a one, whether it's a commercial property, it gets a one. It's a residential property, it gets a one, or if it's a multifamily, single family, golf course gets a one. So everybody under the administrative side benefits equally. Now, we can't have assessments that are, that, let's say we're just divided by everybody because then it's not really an assessment at that point, correct, Tony? Correctly, it becomes a tax at that point.
Arguably, but once again, Russ, talk about being fair and equitable and the benefit allocated to particular properties.
Correct, correct. So, so when we did this, we did, we split them up and, and did the, what I did is I did the determination based on, again, roadways was based on trip generation and used the Institute of Traffic Engineers, which they tell you by land use, whether it's commercial, it's a shopping center, it's an office park. We used those in terms of that for each, each commercial parcel, each residential parcel, single family, multifamily, that was determined by the trip generation. Water management was based on pervious and impervious surfaces. Pervious surfaces is your grass, anything that absorbs water, if you will. The impervious surfaces are your hard surfaces, the house and that. When, and your driveways, all of those. Now, understanding, and I know the one gentleman had pointed out earlier today the fact that we used something from 2008, which showed pervious and impervious flows that come off a property. However, two years ago, when we adopted the official operations maintenance methodology, your engineer had verified those numbers. So there as of two years ago, so they've been updated. They haven't changed. To understand that when you have a, an impervious surface, that the water flowing 100% off the management system. If it's coming off of a pervious surface, pervious surfaces even have a flow. And I think we use 15 or 20% of your impervious surface. And we added those two together based on the acreage of each of the parcels. And I hand-measured each of the commercial parcels. I went through each one, did your pervious and impervious surfaces. So then we, we add all those up together and let's say you're, you know, you're 0.25 of 100%. That 0.25, we multiplied your 0.25 times the budget and that's how you got your allocation of water management. Your roadways, we added up all the trips and the amount of trips you had generated a day based on IT unit. That was your percent of the roadway basis. And then we divided equally of the 500 or 5,000 parcels that are over here in Gateway. We divided that by the number of, or equally the budget for the administration. That's how we got to the assessments that you see in the back. One of the things that, that we really need to understand, we are going, again, and everybody said this a million times, we're just going for the bond validation. What will happen is when we decide, within the next few months, we decide, well, in the first tranche that we need to issue in bonds, we'll go through and say, this project needs to be done, this project needs to be done, this project needs to be done. Then what we will do is, is we'll size that up and then we will, we will have a supplemental engineers report, which will explain what needs to be done. We will have a supplemental assessment methodology, which will show how those particular assessments for that bond issue will affect everyone. Those happen every time we do a bond issue. And Tony, I know, we, um, the other question I had was, those will be new assessments. So we'll have to have assessment hearing for those, no?
Okay, once again, the maximum assessment in Cohib will be levied to this progress.
Over the, yeah, over the parcel.
Correct, so there won't be neat, there will be public meetings of the board, the board discusses that, but there will not be the same type of notices that go out for debt service.
Okay, got it. So that's what we're doing in terms of the methodology, that's how we calculate the methodology. Again, it's a process we've been doing for the last couple of years with your operations and maintenance. It gets tweaked every year, especially particularly for your operations and maintenance. At Pelican Reserve, for instance, we had 200 new units issued over there. So that lowered their assessments a little bit because they have their own budget over there. And Gateway, we pretty much have been built, we have a couple more parcels to go, I imagine. And when those, those hit, those individual units will start getting their own assessments. Right now, they're based on blank land. But then, then so that, so eventually if everything stayed constant, that means your assessment would be going down by a little bit based on those number of units that come in. So ultimately, that's it in a nutshell, I guess, from a 30,000-foot level.
Thank you, Russ, we appreciate it.
And Russ, just one clarification, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Only if any new financing exceeds the maximum level of debt per parcel, principal debt per parcel, will we need to go back through the hearing and notification process.
Okay, that's, that's correct. I got it.
Maximum, we propose this, this is the maximum principal amount of debt.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
I'm confused. Can I have a second please? Is that okay? I realize it's not important, but I'm totally confused with this.
Wait, you can, please, please. No. Please contact us after or stop, stop by one of us.
Stick around.
No, 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 this is, this is a question I think everybody should be. We got two budgets.
We, we've already, we've already closed, yeah, I'm sorry.
We, we got to be transparent, people, let them talk. What's going to wait five minutes? Get it, get this, get this stuff answered, we can't continue to hide this crap. Get it out on the public.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Just come up to the microphone.
Yes, any speakers that the board and chair feels appropriate to come back up, they need to use.
I agree with that, let's look, take another couple of minutes.
I won't be long and I'll be as brief as possible.
Identify yourself one, one more time.
Sure, my name is Roseanne Mallett, I live in Gateway Greens. My confusion is simple, there are two budgets that we're talking about. One's operating and maintenance, which is our annual costs of doing business and maintenance. The other is capital, correct? Okay, good. I was told when I asked the question that everybody pays equally, whether it's here, Gateway or Pelican Preserves. Now, I got the answer that on the capital side, which is this $58 million, everybody pays equally and that's where the thousand.
According to the categories, there's.
By category.
Category. Everyone in that category pays the same.
So not everybody that lives under the CDD pays the same unless they're in the category. Okay, based on what he said, Pelican Preserve is not in the roads category?
No, Pelican Preserve is.
He said, right.
Pelican Preserve only participates on the cost that a 2006 rule that was created here exempted them from all the costs except the, basically the administration.
Does that apply to both the operating and the capital budget?
That's, that is correct, they have their own budget, we have our own. Where our. Hold on, Rose, I'll explain it. Right now, at the October 18th or August 18th meeting, we're going to talk about the operating. That's out on the street right now, it's been advertised, it's $846 ballpark for Gateway single-family homes. Everybody's the same, 846, that's the top number, top number, can't go higher. At that meeting, we could reduce it, but 846 is where we're at right now. That's operating. Or Pelican Reserve has their own operating, which is up around 1,200, $1,300 per single-family home. They're separate than us.
And we pay for their, they pay for their own road improvements and all that.
I understand that, but the road, the road projects that we are doing, does it involve Gateway Boulevard?
It does not have anything to do with Pelican Reserve at all.
Hold up, does it involve Gateway Boulevard? Yes, that's in our roads?
Yes, yes.
Good, that's a simple question.
There is a component of this budget that is, uh, street signs or streetlights that is in the budget, in that 58 million, that we have the responsibility of doing.
Right, so Gateway Boulevard's in the roads. But the only people that pay for the roads is Gateway residents. Pelican Preserve doesn't pay for the roads.
That is correct.
Fine, but they, so, so they don't use the roads?
Don't, don't, it goes back, I'm telling you, this goes back to the 2006 arbitrary and capricious rule that the board at that time did.
Okay, how do we, how do we overrule it?
We'll have to save that for. All right. Okay, I think we've addressed everything. Let's move on to, uh, to 6A consideration. So we, we're moving on to 6A, the resolutions. This is consideration of adoption of the resolution 2022-18, repealing resolution 2022-12, adopting an amendment and restating engineers report and a, and an amendment and restated assessment report, so on and so forth.
I make the mo.
Tony.
There's nothing in difference, it's just going to that October.
Yeah. For the resolution, I think Chelsea, did you provide the resolution that put in the August 4th date for both the amended and restated engineers report?
Yes.
And the amended and restated assessment methodology report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's attached to this resolution.
Thank you.
So, so we back to 20218?
Yes, we're back to resolution, uh, 6A.
I make the motion to approve resolution 2022-18.
And the.
And repealing of resolution 2022-12. It's a basic.
That's what it, it does, yes.
I have a motion to second, any further discussion?
Yes, to the extent that I mentioned earlier that a Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee wants to pay their costs upfront, is this still necessary?
Yeah, yeah, but usually is, I, I'll go along with that, but between now and the October meeting.
That'll be decided.
I want in writing, something from Pelican Reserve saying they want that because I don't want.
Totally understand, totally understand.
I don't want to renege on this deal.
We're, we're basically just including the base scope, anything we move forward that we can.
Okay, so if, if that is approved, then we're still good with 22.
Can I try and, so the reason this has come back as such to include Pelican, and this was brought up at Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee's last meeting, and they took a vote. Now, if they want to take it up again at their next meeting, they can.
Chelsea, they didn't understand what they were voting on, I'm sorry, I didn't understand until later.
So.
I'm very sorry. I'm very sorry, Bill. Since we have investigated this further, it may be very financially advantaged, advantageous for the P-PAC to revisit this.
Understood, but I want, I want to be.
They did, yeah, they took a vote on it. I mean, this was one of these, we hit it at the meeting, there was no pre.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't exclude us from passing this, which basically.
Correct.
Corrects the scope.
Okay.
Which includes Pelican Reserve, where we go from here is.
Then I'm okay with that.
I will call the vote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great. Okay, moving on to 6B. Consideration of adoption of the resolution 2022-19, repealing resolution 2022-13, setting a public hearing date for October 6, 2022 at 5:00 PM. So on and so forth.
Yeah. Sure, once again, for the time, the board can set the time of the hearing, time.
Six o'clock is fine, if that gets more people out, it doesn't bother me. We're going to be here anyway.
Okay, all right, so, um, I will revise the motion with the, with the change to revising the time from 5:00 PM to 6:00 o'clock on October 6, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, and I'll second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Great.
What, Mr. Chairman, one thing, I think, Rhonda, are you still on the phone?
I saw she left.
Okay, did she hear and understand the conversation about Pelican Reserve?
You can circle back on that, I would imagine.
Well, I, we'll follow back up with her.
I don't, okay. So moving on to 6C, consideration of adoption of the resolution.
That resolution is no longer necessary, Mr. Chairman, that was a backup resolution just in case the board hadn't adopted the current resolution.
All right.
That, so.
That's fine.
In a, in a.
Correct, because 2022-18 canceled the hearing for today.
Okay.
As part of it.
Thank you, so we're going on to, for Ben's Agenda Management. So, again, are there any issues with Agenda Management?
Doug, before you jump to this, customer care at gatewaydistrict.org, in, in case anybody has any questions.
Yeah, did everybody who that, what's the, what the, what site is to get and ask questions to staff? Say it again.
Customer care at gatewaydistrict.org. Customer care at gatewaydistrict.org.
Okay, Agenda Management.
I, I did move the the electric charger to the B.
Great, thank you.
All the land purchase, I, I moved to the 18th, so the.
Perfect, thank you for doing that on the fly, I appreciate it.
I didn't revise this, but it's.
Yeah, that's nice being managed as we're going, yeah, great job. B, so we've looked at rescheduling the leadership workshop to the 24th.
Doug, to, to the point with this Agenda Management, this would be the opportunity for any of the board members to bring up any additional items that you would like to see staff to be working on.
Yeah, I know we're, I know we're working on, um, the overview of the base resolution and Exhibit B. Will that be in the 18th meeting? That'll be after the P-PAC meeting.
I, that's our goal is to get it on the 18th, right, Tony?
Okay, the resolution.
The Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee Establishment Protocols.
That'll be on the 18th.
Yes.
So, uh, in the future, you aren't, send it over to Chelsea or if you bring it up during the meeting, we can at least, you try.
We send them to Georgia, she's the, she's the agenda ring.
Send them to Georgia, yeah, okay. President's Council Meeting for September, we need a date, right? Or do we have a date?
I believe we set a date.
Okay.
Or for the, no, we have the leadership workshop, we don't have the President's Council Meeting for sometime in September.
Okay, is there anything that, trying to back into items, budget or?
The budget stuff all needs to be done by the end of August, so September, except for staff cleaning up year end, there's no budget in September.
Yes.
District management updates, anything we need to know?
So, um.
Uh, just really quick, as we wrap it up, you guys just, you know, keep your, uh, the talking down, thank you very much.
So, Randy Panay, he's our contracts manager, he started Monday, so we're working on putting together and streamlining the bid process. He'll be working with Tony closely on getting templates for requests for proposals. I believe we already have the ITP app and some other documents here still, so I'm going to let him do a quick little intro.
Hello, everyone, Public Information Officer, Contracts Manager, excited to.
Hello, everyone, Public Information Officer, Contracts Manager, excited to start working with the district. My background is in journalism and local government administration. When I'm not glued to the screen, I'd like to get to meet with a few people. If you have any other questions, let me know, I mean, I'm always one phone call away.
So you'll see that we're slowly making some strides on social media, so we're gonna be with Randy on board, we're gonna be a lot more active, based on the feedback today, we definitely need to get a lot more active with communicating. But he'll be the main point of contact for our Public Information Officer with Laura being the oversight of that, so.
One of the things we, we need to do is, we need to get a pulse or a survey on how our residents consume information, whether it's coming from email, their HOA, or their cams, is it through Facebook, you know, the neighborhood sites, or, you know.
Perfect, in the past, I've done.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I would also encourage everyone that is here to like our Facebook page, that way they get all the accurate information, and like you said, increase the transparency between the district constituents.
Looking forward to our Gateway District tip-toe.
Yes. Coming down the pipeline too.
Well, we'll have our own channel.
Yeah.
So, so a couple other things, I know we had talked about it in, in the past, about potentially post-canceling the September hearings that we normally have with wrapping, meetings, I'm sorry, meetings, just with wrapping up year end, starting the next fiscal. I mentioned that, if you could at least give us staff some reprieve, still in 90 days worth, but it seems like we have a lot of work in front of us, if the board would entertain that idea to.
So we would not have, we would not meet in September?
Correct.
We would take a.
That, that, I'm, I'm requesting that.
I don't think you're gonna get any dissent from this board to take two meetings off.
It, it just gives us time to go back to, and the drawing board and look at this bond validation fiscal year, wrapping up old fiscal.
And staff is either preparing for a board meeting, attending a board meeting, or doing follow-up from a board meeting constantly, so give us a month of reprieve to focus on.
There's nothing that it's, that needs attention like ASAP.
I mean, we don't, it's kinda hard to project out, but as of right now.
We've got one that I'm gonna bring up in Supervisor's Comment, that that's something that can be handled without a board meeting.
Yeah, what I suggest to work with Chelsea on this for the August 18th meeting, is to have a resolution delegating certain authority to her in the case of any emergencies that arise, we are hurricane season, so to the extent we don't have that.
Do we need to put off a whole month? You know, make, cancel one or the other, but I mean, we don't ever sit here and get out in 30 minutes or something, I mean, we're all, we always fill the two hours, or more.
Yeah, but if there was an opportunity for us to take, take two meetings, if there's, if we can work around.
If you had a choice, which one of the two would benefit you all the most, the first one or the second?
Cancel the first.
Probably the second, just because that is fiscal year end. Ideally, we would like both, just like I said, I'm trying to get my hands around a lot of these projects. I've been working with some of you individually on trying to tackle some lingering items.
Try, we, we go with 48-hour notice if we have to have it?
Yeah.
Seven days?
After an emergency, have to put a notice in the paper, seven days.
Okay, seven days, don't be dealable. So if we had to have one, we could do it in a week.
Yeah, so I say we cancel.
Because we have to get it to the news.
My recommendation would be is, we plan to not meet in September, give us a, a reprieve. In the event that something becomes critical, we use the last meeting of the month as a placeholder. Oh, is that, that's the one?
That's the one.
That's the one you don't want, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, I, that's what you said, and I completely heard something opposite, so.
But just let it, let it, let it go, and we'll see, roll the dice, see what happens.
We can just.
So we'll cancel them until. We'll keep the first meeting.
Okay.
And if the agenda stands, if there's nothing critical, we can cancel.
Okay, all right, Tony's nodding his head that he's good.
That works, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then last thing, effective today, we have designated staff for both the Stony Brook Advisory Committee and the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee, or we'll be taking over P-PAC as their staff liaison, and I will be sitting in with the Stony Brook Advisory Committee to help through some of these processes and changes that we're looking to implement, get some standardized, you know, policies in place and procedures in order to help streamline that communication between those advisory committees.
And, and is this is something temporary, or is it gonna be for on? And does the budget reflect that? Because there's a, the percentage of your pay versus who was sitting there, it's much different, so as long as they're paying for that, I have no problem.
We, we will work through that and monitor our budget hours and things like that, but it, from a staff perspective, it is needed.
It will actually save us.
I don't disagree that it's needed, I just wanna make sure.
It'll save us.
It'll save us time, yeah, it'll save us time outside of the meetings by sitting in the meetings.
And again, please don't ever hesitate to reach out, give me a call, shoot me a text, you know, if we need to meet, we're here. We're hopefully gonna be fully staffed in the next month or two, so we can, can start to get ahead instead of catch up.
Where are we at with the 10 building?
The location that we're looking into, the Fairway.
Fairway Lakes Drive.
Two to three weeks, we'll be able to move in.
They, they're, they started doing some work inside of the building, and you're going over tomorrow morning to look at where they're putting some walls in for us to give us a little more space.
So there's an occupancy permit we have to pull, there's Laura, we've already coordinated some of the utilities, so two to three weeks, and we'll be able to get the staff out of the trailer back there.
Yeah, and so I think as, as you guys get closer to Golan, like after you move stuff in, but I would encourage all the board members to, you know, individually set up time to go over and walk through.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we need a good communication strategy to let people know.
Yes, absolutely.
Cause you know what's gonna happen.
That's gonna be on Randy.
And they're gonna see a big sign, like, I came all the way over here and I didn't know.
I have a lot of address changes in the day.
Yeah, okay, great.
Be on Randy.
Yeah. Are we good?
Yes.
Okay, Supervisor comments, I'll just, Mr. Guy, I'll start with you, sir, any Supervisor comments from you?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Bob, I'll go to you.
Uh, yeah, working with staff to finally get to the bottom of our easement issues for landscaping, particularly in Pelican, but I understand it also applies over here at Gateway, where we have a number of areas, and Tony gave us some documentation tonight, where we're just not sure whether we have the authority to be doing what we're doing. So just informationally, the, there's gonna be a cost involved to it, it'll go before feedback, but it's necessary. Just information for the fellow Supervisors.
Yeah, thank you. Ed, I'll go to you.
Yeah, we had an altercation here in Gateway, the Saturday night, past Saturday night, involving a golf cart utilizing a cart path. I don't have the details, the sheriff's gonna have to provide that.
Golf course?
No, on our, on our paths.
Okay.
Down by the Boulevard Deli. Apparently, two guys on a golf cart, I don't know if they didn't give way, didn't give room to a person on a bicycle, but the person fell off, the bicycle had eight stitches. The policeman came, parked his car on the cart path, the path, and proceeded to tell people, you can't go by. I'm not gonna allow you. He threw a bottle of water at one of our residents in, in her car, trying to get around him. Anyway, long story short, a long argument pursued, and a lot of discussion on Gateway next door pursued about can you, or can you not have golf carts and motorized vehicles on our paths? Tony, I called him, and knowing that this, thinking that this was gonna come up tonight, but apparently that person didn't wanna come, said to call Randy Cerchi at the county, got ahold of Randy Cerchi, he went to the attorney, the attorney's come back, and the bottom line is, golf carts are not allowed on either the streets, the cart paths, in Gateway. That is.
Gateway Boulevard.
Gate, Gateway Boulevard, any road that the county owns, or path that's located within the right-of-way, right now, golf carts, their position is, golf carts are not allowed. Now, they will allow us, and they gave us an answer, catching everybody cold on this, but I just got it. They gave us a deal that the CDD can take and ask for an exception to that, anytime they have a cart path that is eight feet wide or wider, and that it is within at least five, or outside five feet of the road edge. So in other words, they want it protected. For the most part, most of our cart paths are paths in Gateway comply with that. There's a couple of them that are four foot wide, that's just taboo, he said, don't even waste your time asking for that. Our problem is, my problem is, over in Gateway Greens, I've got 300 members of that country club that live outside community, a lot of whom drive their golf cart over. That is not gonna be allowed anymore. There are a lot of people that drive, if you go down on a Monday evening, go down to the Gateway Boulevard Deli, there is a plethora of golf carts.
Or the skinny dogs.
Or skinny dogs, any of those, that's not allowed anymore. Golf carts are basically gonna be stuck to the community they're in, that's it. We need to take and act as a board to try to stop that, and get permission to allow carts to go, and let these be multiple, multiple-use paths.
Multimodal.
Multiple, with the understanding that golf carts have to take and give right-of-way to all other modes of transportation.
What's the, what's the width of the, the sidewalks on Gateway Boulevard?
Eight foot.
Currently, they're eight foot?
Yeah, a little bit over eight foot. And they said if you do have four feet, and you wanted to allow it, they will allow and entertain us coming in with a plan to widen the road from sidewalk for four to eight feet.
So let me ask a question again, so Gateway Boulevard, like the sidewalks that we, we just re, we bring on those, where does it go to?
When you leave, when you leave Stony Brook and come up, it's really, really tight on the eight feet.
Okay.
Probably wanna get out there with a measuring device. As you get up to Gateway Greens, it is definitively eight feet.
Okay.
All the way. There's one little problem, when you go past hidden links, the road, the sidewalk goes out to the edge of the curb.
There's no five feet?
That, yep, no five feet. That is going to be a real Achilles' heel, that means that there will be no carts that will be able to get past hidden links coming from the north.
That's county ordinances?
County.
Cause you remember I brought this up with the multimodal path for C5, cause it is right next to the.
What I would like to do is.
Even though it's eight feet.
What I'd like to do is have, you don't have anything to do.
Well, you just gave her the.
My golf, who are you looking at?
I'd like to have staff and have Chelsea get involved in looking at what we need to do to go back to the county, because we've got to allow these golf carts out here in this community, there will be a outcry if we don't. I mean, these people, but what's gonna happen, is people are just going to disobey the law, and then we got a real problem.
Then we just pass them to the county and let them bark there, because that's what they should be barking at, when it comes to this.
My, my, my problem is, is that we gotta deal with them on a lot of issues, right now is not the time I wanna throw rocks at the county. We got some issues that are coming up that we need to, need them on our side. But I'd like to have, Chelsea, you've got the latest stuff that I got from Rick, Randy Cerchi.
If that's the board direction.
Yeah, I think what, I think what we should do is probably set aside some time in one of our workshops, just to even talk about, cause we even mentioned, we need to probably look and update, modify our golf cart and just our total policy for use in the community. I mean, my big concern is, is bikes, along with golf carts, cause you cannot ride a bike on our roads.
Too dangerous.
So, so I think we just need to look holistically, but you guys will just take a look, address it from a much broader, not just specifically Gateway Boulevard, but do we need to be looking at golf carts? Sorry?
Be careful drive as well, since that's a county road as well.
Let's look at it more broadly and try to solve this, or at least.
But it's really interesting that Lee County has a regulation that got that, that.
I believe.
In the city of Fort Myers, there wasn't any reg.
I believe it's a Florida statute, but we'll follow up.
Well, I hope it is, cause I'm gonna go through C5.
All right, so we'll move on that, yeah, anything else, Ed?
No.
Nothing.
Okay, two things, I have, one, I just, I wanna compliment staff, just going through budgeting this bond process, it's a lot of work, and I appreciate all the effort that's gone through it, especially over the last couple of weeks with, you know, taking emails and phone calls from residents, and being able to handle, putting my thank you out, trying to address the issues as best you can, so thank you very much for all your hard work there. As we move forward to the new fiscal year, I would like for us, probably staff, to really think about how, we've talked about leveraging committees a little bit more than, than we do today, Pelican has a great job with their committees. I'd really like for us to take a good hard look, and maybe it's something we can talk about at some point in the future, maybe it's the off-site, but where, where do we have the most critical needs for committees? And where can we, you know, reap the most benefit of having that, you know, those committee structure, getting that expertise from the community, and getting some of that voice of, voice from our community to help, help offset staff, and give us a little checks and balances in what we do, so if you guys can just look into that.
I, I did have one more. Somewhat time between now and the October, October, October 6th meeting on this bond deal. Like to go through and follow up on what some of the people were saying, let's go through with, and create that bullet point of those things that are in there, we, we didn't, believe me, we did not put these things in there lightly. A lot of the stuff that we're doing, especially waterway, is not our liking, it's what the state tells us we have to do. We don't have any choice, they tell us we have to do it, they told us we're gonna be fined $10,000 a day if we don't. So, and I don't wanna go down, but let's itemize the things that are in that report, and put a priority as to what we can have as consensus, that this is our top item, this is our next item, this is our next item, and you'll quickly see that it, while it, some may call it a wish list, a lot of these things, we have our hands tied, that we've got to do it. We don't have any choice.
Yeah, and I did write down too, I can't remember who was speaking, but I said, we need to communicate the why of the stuff that we do. I mean, we, we would create business cases internally and justify what we're doing, so I think we've done that, we just may not be communicating it publicly. I don't know if we need to go and prioritize everything on that list, but maybe the, our, our, what is it, what'd you call it, this, the first phase? Series one, maybe just doing that for series.
We got a lot of good feedback today, so we're definitely taking it.
I took a lot of notes.
We may even be reaching out to some of the, the comments.
And I still think there's a gap in truly understanding this process and the fact that this is just a validation, everything has to be approved moving forward, and, and that there is a process, so I still think there's some, some gaps.
And you're on that park issue big time. We, we gotta have some safety factor, that if we drop this other deal, it's gotta be for a good reason.
Yeah, yeah, okay, nothing else? Thank you all, thank you all for coming today.
Thank you.
I will call the meeting adjourned at 5:45.